Good evening and welcome to the public session of the Halton District School Board for, wow, it's October already, Wednesday, October the 7th, 2015. I'd like to share that this is our first board meeting with our new director, Director Miller. Congratulations. Yeah, I'd also, I believe all trustees are here and trustee Danielley is online.
Yes, I am.
And welcome. I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience and thank you for coming tonight. Can, I'd also like to remind everyone, we are being video voice recorded and we are out on, in the, in the public realm on video. And if you have something that makes noise, if you could please silence it or turn it off, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay, so the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Can, do I have a motion to approve the agenda today? Trustee Reynolds and trustee Gerbence, is there any discussion on our agenda today? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. So our next, do we have any possible declarations of conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we have no delegations or presentations. So we're all already up to our minutes of our board meeting for September the 16th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Trustee Papin and trustee L. Harrison, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. We also need approval of our special board meeting minutes from September the 23rd. Do I have any movers? Trustee Gray and trustee L. Harrison, any discussion? All those in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Do we have any business from, oh, we do have one item coming from private session tonight.
We have one item regarding negotiations and I saw move.
Thank you, do we have a second or for the motion? Trustee Papin, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. We're on a roll. The next item is the order paper. Do we have, is there any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? I believe there's a couple of great areas. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comment is with respect to M-15-0139, subsection three, with respect to corresponding with the Ministry of Education around truth and reconciliation. I just wanted to thank you, Chair Amos, for writing that letter and just to advise trustees that I've noticed that there's a number of other boards that have also, are also picked up on or are interested in that topic. So hopefully that will get some good traction. So thank you.
And thank you to bring it to the board. Is there any other comments or questions on the order paper? Seeing none, we are now up to our action items. And our first action item is the Program Viability Committee. From a, from a Director Miller, report 15114 revised on page 11 of your board package. Also welcome Mr. Renzella, sorry. No, I can't call him, well, former Associate Director, I can't even say that, so, Associate Miller, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you, trustees. A couple of things to note around it, around the report that you've got before you. The first is there were some suggestions around the changing of the actual recommendations. This reflects those changes. We changed those, right, those, I'm running, the PowerPoint I'm going to talk about in a little minute and that, a wee minute, because that reflects some other stuff too. But those wording changes are in there. I also want you to note on the appendix around the consultation process, we changed a couple of dates, moved things around. These were always proposed dates anyway, they weren't fixed. Soon as we have approval from the board, we will then fix the dates, publicize, publicize those and get them out there. But there was the very first information night we actually had on October 19th, or, which was a federal election night, so clearly we had to move it. So we also felt, based on comments from this group at the board meeting and program accommodation, that we might not be giving ourselves enough time. So the first information night would be October the 26th, that's another week we've given ourselves. And we'll, we'll set the other two dates for Milton and Halton Hills as we go forward. But soon, once we get approval, we'll, we'll determine that, book some places and get that information out as quickly as possible. The only, the only other change in the appendix was, and that was an omission, it was pointed out, and it was an omission by us, was we would like to consult Student Senate as well around the Program Viability Committee as well. And that's now put in there, all right? And I want, these dates are, we haven't put specific dates for some of the consultations because we'll, we may have to work those out as we go along. So they're kind of, we've given ourselves a range of dates to do that. So the next part I want to talk, and I want to thank Senior Manager planning, Renzella, for helping me do this. We had quite, we had a in-depth conversation at program accommodation, and I think one of the concerns, or some of the concerns expressed, was what do the information nights look like? So we want to give you a better flavor of what they look like, and I think this, this is for the public's digest, public consumption as well, so that they can see what our intentions are on those information nights. They may change slightly, but not greatly from this. The first one is the PowerPoint, the first slide up there, and we are going to frame the whole conversation around, we have a problem or an issue, we need help in solving this. I think this is an opportunity, notwithstanding that there are people in entrenched positions around this issue, but I think this is an opportunity for us as a board to engage the public in problem solving. We have a significant issue that we have to wrestle to the ground, and I'm, I'm hopeful that the process that we're going to take will engage the public and help us solve the problem by providing valuable feedback that we can then form a final recommendation that ultimately will come before the Board of Trustees. So you'll see on the current issues, it'll be framed like this, we'll talk about it. This will not be the exact PowerPoint that we do on the information nights, but this is going to form the basis of it. The only one I would suggest that we'll have to elaborate a little bit about is French language proficiency. That has come up several times, we've got it up there. We don't measure proficiency, so, but what we want to emphasize is we would not, we don't want the public to think that the intent is to lower the French proficiency that we have now. So that our students that go through high school and French immersion programs are still able to be successful in those French immersion programs. So, I mean, it'll take some elaboration there, but I think, for, and so that's essentially the problem. Feel free to ask questions as we go along, rather than wait till the end if you like.
Trustee Harvey Hope has a question.
Sure.
My question is farther into the presentation.
Okay.
Then we'll put it on hold.
Okay. So we would also, at those information nights, we would present data and information. And there's examples of that in the actual report of the data that we would present. We're open to hearing from the Program Accommodation Committee and/or others, and some have talked about transportation costs and getting that, and getting that out to the public as well on those information nights. So if we have suggestions from this group, from the Board of Trustees, or from program accommodation of, of data that they think would be helpful for the public, then by all means. We also want to talk about the role and function of the Program Viability Committee so that we, we make, we ensure that people understand what the role was. I know that for some of you, you may have received the same emails I have, and some of them believe that there's a predetermined decision out there, and we want to demonstrate clearly that there is no predetermined decision. This is about consulting the public to help us make a recommendation. And then we would outline the process, we use that Program Viability Committee. Too many buttons to press. Then we would show the four options and describe how we got those options and why those four options are up there. And I mean, I don't have to go over those, you've seen them before in the reports, they're up there. And there, there's the four options. Wow, go ahead, sorry?
Um, we have a speaker's list, so trustee, okay, thank you, trustee Gerbence.
Through you, Chair Amos. So the four options that are up there, they're not carved in stone, right?
Absolutely. They're not carved in stone. They are there, as I said earlier, we've modeled this on our boundary review process. And if we went in there with an open slate, the community doesn't have, often, they're confused about what to talk about, and all sorts of stuff. This is to provide a framing, a basis for conversation. And I, and I've said it to those email, I've said it in those emails that I've responded to, these are not necessarily, and may not even be, what ultimately goes to the Board of Trustees. But without this, I think it makes, it makes, like, I can imagine being in an information session and we're not presenting anything, any examples of what people are thinking. I think they leave more confused than if we present these. So I'll, I'll say it, I'll say it here, I'll say it anywhere, these are not necessarily what will appear. They are not even close to being carved in stone, they're not even chiseled in a piece of granite, so, all right? So then, what we'll talk about too is, of those four options, we think it's important that the public understands the impacts of those. There's two reasons for that, to first of all, demonstrate the impact or the implications of those four options, but also to help them understand, for whatever is chosen, there are implications. No matter what gets put in front of the trustees as a recommendation and whatever the Board of Trustees chooses, even if its status quo, there are implications, there's an impact. And we want, we really want to engage the public in helping them help us understand that there's not a black and white answer here. There's nothing that's going to say, here's the solution, let's edit sorted, there's implications to everyone. So by presenting the implications of the four options that are up there, I think, one, we'll demonstrate that there are big implications of any of those four, and all of those four, and that they'll understand that we're looking at that, and that when they make suggestions, hopefully they will understand that, that there are implications for our students and our board to do that. Then this came out of the Program and Accommodation Committee and it's, what do we want? We'll talk to the public about this. What are the outcomes of our consultation process? What do we want the public to help us with? And, and I think in the original report, it's not, that's not clear. I think this makes it clear that we will present this to the public and we will solicit feedback from them at the information sessions, not on the options, not on helping the, that will come in the consultation process, we're still kind of phase one, but on how they want us to communicate with them, how they want to provide feedback to us, and what do they hope to see out of it, what's the, the, the outcome of our public consultation process? So I, I think that, yeah, that's the last slide. So, do you have anything you want to add, Dom? No. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it open for questions. But I, again, like I've said, it's, I think it's going to be one of the more difficult things to do because people, it, I, I think it's a human tendency, people will argue for positions as opposed to trying to solve the problem in many cases. And we're really going to do our best to try to engage them to help us solve, resolve this, not solve it, I guess, resolve this to our best abilities, so.
Thank you. And there are some people who have comments or questions for you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yeah, I have a couple. They're sort of all tied together, though. One of the things under recommendation one about the process, I was curious, it says two reps per school, and wondered if we had even an idea of how we were going to choose them, having been part of a process of choosing in other consultations, there can be problems. Where are we? Yeah, let's find it. And in the meantime, the other one is PVC needs to share in advance of May 4th. I think it would be problematic if it went direct from the PVC to the public board package. So if I could add that comment. And I'm looking for it while I'm talking. And still, you're still doing focus groups in the same week for municipalities, so you may have people, it's in the chart, Communication Plan PVC, December to January, focus groups, one to two reps per school is in the comments section. Okay.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. No, we haven't determined exactly how we'll gain those reps from the school. I know that many people will provide suggestions for us. What we have done with Boundary Review Committee, we have generally left it up to school councils to determine who those people are. And it starts as a voluntary nature. I think we will have lots of people volunteering for this. But the focus, for those focus groups, which we have not also carved in stone how that plays out, that'll only be one vehicle for feedback and input. So, your other questions about the PVC committee, is that any?
Hi, it says that the PVC committee will report back, it would be probably the next page, end of May, March, April, input shared with the PVC and Administrative Council, and then in May it comes to the Board of Trustees. And I would respectively submit that we need at least a program and an accommodation committee meeting in between, rather than it coming out of PVC, which has three trustees and showing up in a public board package for voting. There needs to be a couple steps in between.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. I have no issue with that at all. So we'll.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation and for some of the updates that have been made since this was before the board a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to pick up on something related to school councils and just raise a caution that I think as volunteers themselves, we want to be really careful not to put them in positions where they become the bad guy in their, bad person in, in their schools. So as much as we can assume that responsibility, I think that's something that would be helpful to school councils. And again, on that note, just if we can give them the tools to consult in their communities, I think that would be helpful. I think it's great, and I hope people are listening, because it's not necessarily written in the report that we're signaling that there is no predetermined decision here. This is to be an open and inclusive process that helps us to solve a problem. I've read the emails as well with people talking about, you know, the impacts on French immersion and so on. And undoubtedly, the, the outcome may have impacts on some of our programs, but we don't know what those are yet. So I think if we can keep talking about an open process, if we can, at times when we're telling people what the implications are, if we can also seek what the implications are, are to them, and I think that that would be, are really helpful. And even things like numbering options, one, two, three, and four can send out a wrong message that, you know, it's four and that's, that's all we've got. So maybe we just call them options and, and your ideas go here kind of thing, but, so I look forward to seeing that piece of the inclusion. And then lastly, I was wondering whether you would feel, if it would be appropriate, and whether my colleagues around the table feel it would be appropriate that after the information sharing piece, i.e. phase one, that an interim report come back to the board and then we talk about a little bit what the in-depth consultation piece looks like, because at that point in time, we'll have heard how people want to be consulted. So I would love to keep up to date kind of on what, what that thinking is, how we'll move forward. Thank you.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee L. Harrison. I appreciate all those comments, and I think we can, we can do them all. And certainly first around the, the two parents from the student, the parent councils, we've had that experience before through boundary reviews, and we have, we've, we've done our best to ensure that, I hesitate to say the word protected, but that they don't become the targets for certain things. Also, the other comments you make, I agree 100% with, and I think we can do that around the messaging. And I think the messaging around this whole process is going to be very important for staff and trustees around this table to talk about, these are the options. And I like your idea about not numbering the options. Sure, we'll just put out the options there, that's. And finally, your last comment about an interim report, I'm, I'm comfortable with us producing an interim report. I guess we'd have to word it in such a way that it was just about feedback and just about public consultations. So I think we, we could do that, we could.
Okay.
That comment requesting an interim report was just with respect to shaping a consultation program.
Thank you. You did it. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair. Just a, a little bit of a comment, the, the notion of presentation of data, I wonder if the data will just be hard data or will it also include soft data? In other words, the anecdotal data, the impact of being in a school that has an English program that's very small, resulting in children having split classes all the way through their elementary school career. I, I think that that has a place, the soft and the hard data, in your presentation. And maybe some quotes from some parents and how they view the impact for their children. Certainly, as trustees, we've probably all heard such comments, and, and the anecdotes, I think, really hit home when, as was much mentioned here just a few minutes ago, how does it impact you and your family, or how has your child been impacted by the current situation and splits of numbers that are coming into the English versus French programs? So I like that. And I also concur with everyone here that the process being, and I know that it's already set up to be very inclusive, that the presentation is made in a manner that, again, that these are for options, we're looking for other options or, or further information on these options, so as we can delve into what will be best for, for all of the districts in, in Halton. So I, again, concur with my colleagues on that.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Gray, that's an excellent idea about soft data for, and that's the type of thing, if, if you have those kinds of suggestions, absolutely. So.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you. And through your chair, to Director Miller, I'm in agreement with everything I've heard here. I think it addresses some of the feedback we've gotten on the consultation plan from the public very well, and we've hit on the, some of the key points and the, the understandings around how the process will, will go forward. Thank you for that. My questions are perhaps just a suggestion for the, the dates, because I know that originally the, the information nights, the order was Milton, Halton Hills, Burlington, Oakville, and then the, if you scroll down to the bottom of the chart, the proposed focus group nights has the same order. So just my suggestion would be if the Milton and Halton Hills dates now for the information session are pushed perhaps into November, that perhaps the focus group nights could be adjusted accordingly. So that perhaps Burlington and Oakville, who have the information sessions earlier, do the December dates, and Milton and Halton Hills, who might be getting that information a little bit later, have some more time to digest it and take the, the January dates. So if that's appropriate, the way the dates work out, I decided I'd put that out there.
Through you, Chair Amos, trustee Graves. Sure, that's, that's, that's easy.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. I, I too agree with everything I've heard from my colleagues, and I just wanted to say I'm very much looking forward to the consultation session. I know that we will hear from people who are polarized on the issue, and I'm very keen to hear, hear from those who are somewhere in the middle, and will have an open mind to be able to consider all perspectives. And so I like that we're framing this as a problem, as in like a math problem or a puzzle, that will require and hopefully inspire a great deal of collaboration and collaborative problem solving that will benefit all of our students. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Collard.
Just a couple of comments on, for the focus groups where you're taking one to two reps from a school, I would like to suggest that in dual-track schools, you request that one be from the French immersion program and one be from the regular English program, so that you get a good sense of what's happening in our dual-track schools. And I'd also like to suggest that we try to capture parents from the different grade divisions, so that some are from primary, some from intermediate, some from junior, and, and so we're seeing some good cross-representation of, of the different students in our schools. And just, I want to congratulate you on getting to this point, and I know that there's been a lot of feedback so far from parents, thinking that those four options are actually the route we intend to go. And as my colleagues have said before me, I, I know that we're going to find something that probably is a little bit out of the box, and we're going to find that through this consultation process. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to moving forward with this. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Ditto and ditto. I agree with everything they've said. I had a couple more practical questions. One of the things that I know is going to pop up, it hasn't specifically come into an email yet, but I heard it from somebody who talked to me somewhere, which was, okay, if this is implementation of December, of September 2017, and my child's already in grade three French immersion, and we decide delayed entry or whatever, you know, or I'm a child in JK and I'm trying to decide what to do, and all those things, I just wanted us to say it and reiterate it, that this board has a historical wonderful example of grandfathering and looking ahead and all those kinds of things. And, but I thought maybe it should come from you.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope and all trustees, we do in fact have a very good reputation in this board, and we've done it many, many times where we've grandfathered kids to try to not move kids out of their current school. I can't imagine that we would be taking, we would be recommending, nor would you be accepting students that are currently enrolled in French immersion and moving them out of French and moving them out of French immersion or anything like that. So I expect that implementation, as we've talked September 2017, if there were significant changes to what we're doing now, and I say if, because what we're doing now may ultimately be what remains. Because, as we've said many times, it's not predetermined what the recommendation's going to be. But I can't imagine that we would not phase in whatever it is that, uh, we're doing if there are significant changes, that the, the delivery model, the changes would be phased in over a period of time. And I've, I've thought something not dissimilar from the FDK process, how that was phased in over several years. In which case, that would ensure grandfathering of kids currently in the program and so on. Uh, that would be our, our, um, that's what we would expect that would happen. So.
Um, and also I'm wondering, since I know, um, my own problem with trying to be in two places at once and missing tonight's excellence evening to be here, that perhaps we could have a fifth open house, um, here or somewhere central or something for the people who, you know, could not get to their Milton night or cannot get to wherever. And if, if there is a way to do one that is generic, um, perhaps, uh, with all due respect to the, to the staff time, or allowing someone who can't go to Oakville to go to Burlington and them not to be, um, that specific to the community, that you actually could go to a different one. It's just that with single track being in Oakville and dual track, a lot of the time in Milton, you might get a different sense. So I'm wondering whether we need a, a neutral ground, kind of a fifth one that would just capture people who, for, for personal reasons, just cannot get to a certain date. And I didn't check to see if they were all on the same day of the week, but that's also problematic in that, um, you know, like, just again, from a, from an accessibility point of view, um, if you're, if you're okay to go to different communities and if they're different dates, then maybe people could find a way to actually attend.
Through Chair Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope. No issue with putting a fifth one on and we could do that centrally or I don't, I don't, I, I know Senior Manager Renzella is looking forward to them. So he, he, there is no problem doing a fifth one. And we have no issue, even though we've geographically placed them, people can go wherever they want. They can go to all of them if they want. So, you know, we're not going to limit it. Most of the presentations, when we're in the information sessions, there'll be that balance. We'll, we'll take questions from people. But we, we're going to be very guarded in, in, in instructing people around the questions and the information sessions. It's not about the options. It's clarification about the process. So our, our, I anticipate that our information sessions will be pretty generic all the way along. But I can imagine there may be a few questions specific to a geographic area at those information nights. But no problem, people can go to whichever one they want and we can put a fifth one on in a more neutral or central location.
But would we need a fifth one if it was written that this is a session being held for anyone in Halton? I mean, if you leave it open that way.
Well, uh, one thing you could do is have a fifth one that's electronic, right? I mean, perhaps we could have one that is electronic.
As per our typical process with school boundary views, all information is posted on the website. We will create a special section on the board website with all the information that has been presented, the data, the PowerPoints as well. We'll likely have a, an FAQ developed and an opportunity for any other questions that have not been answered in the FAQ that we can respond to and post. So again, we, I think we fully understand everybody's, uh, time is valuable and they may not be able to attend. But if, if that information is available, especially the first go-around is really just telling them about the process and not necessarily coming up with additional options, but how they can provide some feedback moving forward. I think that, that's the intent.
Just my concern about having one more is the, this is going to be very staff-intensive and it's outside of school hours. And I'm just concerned about the amount of time. So I like your electronic type thing, but if things are going to be posted, we'll just have to make sure that we keep letting people know that there is another place where the information will be. Um, go ahead.
And through, through your Chair Amos, um, I imagine, although I have not, I, I've not asked to be on the agenda, but when PIC happens, I would imagine the new director gets to say a couple of words. I, it's my intention to talk about this, uh, at the PIC. So there'll be already people start at PIC, not at the PIC. To talk about this, so people will start to become acquainted and the buzz will get out. So.
I guess you'll have to pass it through the superintendent of PIC. Okay. Trustee Reynolds.
Through you, Chair. So part of my question was actually already answered. Thank you. I wanted to ensure that we were, um, looking through the equity lens, ensuring equity access to, to everyone. So thank you for clarifying that. So what is the criteria, uh, which, where you're going to hold these? And so that the public is aware, uh, is it, um, the schools that perhaps are experiencing the most, um, in the dual-track? Are you, like, what is your criteria for selecting where these are being held?
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Reynolds. They will likely all be in high schools. I mean, we, I, I would hesitate to do it in an elementary school because I think there's a good chance we'll have lots of people. And, uh, the high schools, I think, are our venues. And we'll just book some high schools in each of those areas.
I believe it'll be where there's availability and where has the largest capacities too, probably. And lots of parking, yes. Um, Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Amos. I'd also like to thank Director Miller, sorry, and, uh, Manager Renzella for all your work that you've done. I guess my question has to do with, um, the core French and the implementation of, uh, the board-wide core French and what you think the effect may be on this process.
I'll answer the first part and then I'll let, uh, Manager Renzella talk about the impact on core, on core French. Uh, all of these options, um, are predicated on core French, primary core French expanding. Uh, there's a board motion that by June 2018, all of our schools will have primary, not all of our schools, but all those schools that can have primary core French will have primary core French. That process will continue this year. We'll probably bring it, we will bring a report in, um, in time for staffing, probably around February, as to how many schools we're going to expand to this year and, um, and where we're going with that. So, um, that continues and that will continue because these are all predicated on that, right? Unless there's another motion to say otherwise, but at this point it's, it's there. And I'll let, um, Dom talk about.
The, um, through the chair, to, uh, Trustee Pappen. Uh, the, as mentioned last year, um, and earlier on, when we're talking about the whole core French and the impact on French immersion. You know, this is the second year of implementation. I don't know how much of a trend we can see. We'll start getting the data now in October to see what the impact is in those schools that have French core. Uh, see if there's still been a decline in, or decrease in the French immersion uptake in some of those schools. And, you know, I gladly have that information available. But I think two years of data may not be, you know, wouldn't establish a significant trend at this point in time. In fact, we just did a quick analysis of September enrollments, um, you know. And, and there are some schools where we saw an increase in uptake in a French immersion. You know, uh, so that experienced a decline the first year, second year, they see an increase. So what does that mean? Are people now concerned that they're going to not be able to get in French? We don't know yet, but again, it's only two years of data. So.
Thank you. Trustee Schneider.
Hi, um, through your chair. My Coach C and I were just wondering if you wanted us to consult Senate or was it just informative?
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Schneider. I think both inform, but I, we want to hear what students have to think about this. I know we're really talking at this point, the impacts of what is ultimately decided will have an impact on secondary schools. There's no question. The decision will be primarily around what's going on at the elementary level. And so I know for, uh, some of the secondary school students, uh, that's a long time ago. But I think your voice is extremely valuable. Many of our students in the Senate and otherwise have been through French immersion and they have experiences that are valuable and, and significant for us to hear. So I think we will be coming and, and, I don't think, we will be coming and saying, here's, what do you guys think?
So do you want to just, uh, come and present to our elementary school students, Senate? Or, um, to ever, all of the students?
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Schneider. Sorry, I guess I didn't make myself clear. To all of you. To all of you.
And would it be during those October sessions or, um, later?
Why don't you, me and Trustee side jet together and we'll figure that out? I'm fine with that. Is that, I'm assuming that's okay with the rest of trustees?
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. Firstly, it's important, uh, to me that we reach out to the hard, hard to hear and hard to find voices as well. Often it's the folks that speak the loudest and the longest that sway these processes and those opinions are awesome. But I think finding those voices that we don't often hear from is, is really super important for this, given the implications across the system. And secondly, um, will we be? I, I hear a lot about evidence-based decision-making. So we've talked about presenting information about our local Halton data. So I just wonder about the role of, uh, evidence and data from beyond Halton, i.e. what other systems are out there and, and working, um, and how that may factor in.
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Al Harrison. On your first one, we will endeavor to do that. Absolutely. The first part about, uh, those, um, people difficult to reach. We will do our best to get to those people. I agree with you. Often they are, um, not involved in this process or engaged in the consultation process. As for the data from other boards, we examined a fair bit of data. We examined the situation in other boards through the Program Viability Committee to help come up with these options. I'm not sure, um, I mean, I'm sure it will come up in conversations. In terms of presenting that data in the information sessions to the public, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I didn't foresee having to do some, I didn't foresee doing something like that. I don't think our, uh, our committee. I think that might, because we don't know enough about those boards, we may be presenting data without of context to the public. Whereas Halton is the context they have. So I'd be reluctant to do it in an information session. In terms of consultation, it can help. I mean, I think we'll have to give that some thought though. It's, it's worth some thoughts for sure. So let me, let us think about that. So.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, not necessarily, uh, other boards, but I think people may ask us, you know, well, what's the evidence around? What are the benefits of French immersion? How, how are those quantified and considered? And how will those factor into our decision-making? Like that, that part of evidence and research?
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Al Harrison. Yeah, I think we can do that. Yeah, for sure. So.
Okay. Thank you very much. Trustee Evans.
Through you, Chair Amos. Considering the length of time that this is going to take to, if there is going to be a, a new way of doing French immersion, would it not make sense to, uh, at least in, include in perhaps those focus groups, parents who have preschool children, like, you know, one or two from each community? Just because it's going to probably affect them more than anybody that's currently, you know, at, at the junior and higher levels.
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Evans. There are big challenges with that. First, identifying those people. And they're not in our system and there's no guarantee that they will come into our system is another factor. I mean, if their children aren't in school, they may move prior to that. We have had some experience, um, in consulting with an entire community. And, um, I would say that that was very difficult and complex. And, uh, added a layer that, um, increased the contention, shall we say? I'm not suggesting that that's what happened here. But I, my, my personal feeling, I can certainly go back and talk about it. My personal feeling is that adds another layer of complexity that may make this even more complicated. As I said, because, primarily because we can't. It's difficult identifying those parents. And second, there's no guarantee they're going to come into our system, right? So, um, I'm, I'm not, so.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to circle back to something that, uh, Trustee Harvey Hope mentioned about having the information session available online. I think that would be a great idea to, um, either video voice record, uh, a live session or have, have it done at the, at the computer and have that available online. So that for those people who couldn't make the information sessions, um, we're able to direct them online and they can, they can get all of the information that they would have gotten had they attended, uh, minus perhaps any, uh, Q and A sessions that, that happened at the end. So I think that was a great idea.
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Graves. You know, we can, uh, web test these. We can put these information sessions on YouTube or something like that. Yep, absolutely, we can.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yes, um, I guess it's more of a comment than a question. But just because we have this whole process does not negate the fact that constituents, um, still have the option to talk directly to their trustees. And the trustees have the opportunity to reach out and visit school councils and talk to people where they are and, you know, that kind of thing as well. So yes, all the information's going to be coming from the machine of the board and all these open houses. But it does not mean that, um, you know, we also don't have our feelers out to find out what else is going on. I know there are specific groups of students that I want to, to consult with. I also would like, and it may require some research help in that trying to figure out what, to, to some extent with the high school students, their, their experience of learning French and whether or not some of them, having gone through French immersion, would have rather done it a different way. I mean, it, it is a group that, yes, asking the preschoolers, they may or may not come here. And yes, the high schools have already done it. But it will, it can inform us on the soft data that Trustee Gray was talking about to say, you know, in hindsight, now that you're in, wherever, second year of Glendon College taking French immersion or grade 12 and gee, I wish I had taken X or Y. Or maybe it would have made sense if I'd taken grade 10 core. Like some of those kinds of questions may factor back to saying, okay, well, if that's really how some of that plays out, you know, if we do X, will that reverse that trend or would it change this? And I'm not saying that it's something you can sort of put your finger on. But if so, I would say to at least put the, the feelers out there to say if a student particularly has a comment, that it's welcome and that we want to hear from them and say, what would you have thought about taking French in grade one instead of waiting, waiting till grade four? Those kinds of questions.
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope. Yeah, good point. I, um, I think it is significant to talk to high I, I think it is significant to talk to high school kids. Having been a former high school teacher, principal, et cetera, they're usually not short of opinions. And I'm sure a few people around the room concur with that. But there are some very significant questions that we can ask them about when they were in French immersion in secondary school. One of the challenges we're having is getting specialist teachers that are bilingual. And we believe as these numbers go, one of the problems is that, that will be exacerbated. And so do the students in high school, do they want their core subjects in French immersion? Or do they want drama, or gym, or phys ed, I should say, or that? I'm, I'm quite confident that they will give us valuable opinions and won't be shy at expressing them.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Through you Chair. I would like to second what trustee Harvey Hope had said. I think it's very important to talk to the students because they are the actual intimate users of the program, are in it right now, and are most impacted and affected. And for them, this is relevant and timely. And it would be good to get their reflections on, on their, you know, the experience and French learning and assessment of proficiency, and to get the, their unbiased and, you know, open input that may help to shape how we deliver French in Halton. Thank you.
Just a comment on that. Through you Chair Amos, to trustee Oliver. I very much like that idea, and there's an added benefit to that. There's a value-added benefit to that, is we talk a lot about student voice, and we are giving voice to the students here around what comes after them. And I, I very much like that idea, so.
Thank you. Well, seeing no more speakers, I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board adopt the process as outlined in report 15114 revised for public community consultation with respect to possible actions or recommendations for program viability of both English and French programming. And be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the timelines for the public community consultation process, and that the completion of that process will result in a recommendation coming to the board no later than May 2016 with implementation of September 2017 for any significant changes in the delivery of either French immersion or English programming. Moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Papin. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Yeah, but. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for all your hard work on this so far, and it's a very exciting time for our board, and looking forward to seeing what the outcome is. Our next item is our student trustee reports. Trustee Schneider, answer hi.
Hello, everyone. So we're going to both talk about our conference that we attended this past weekend, and also our student senate, which is coming up. So I'll start with the conference. So this was the Ontario Student Trustees Association's conference in downtown Toronto at the Marriott. So this is our fall general meeting, and Jovan and I, second time attending. And I also helped plan the conference. And there, we, we got the opportunity to participate in professional development, a lot more review about Robert's rules and such, the basics of the boardroom, but also PD from keynote speakers. We had Andrea Horvath come in, talk about politics. We had the past education minister. It was, yeah, Jane Ecker come in, and it was interesting to hear her politics from a nonpartisan view now that she's out of it. And, well, yeah. And, well, close as we can get. And also, I'll work on, in the organization around our initiatives for this year. Jovan and I are in the public board councils, so this year we're working on a mental health conference, which will happen in Ottawa in the next year, and also a position paper or some sort of initiative around LGBTQ issues. That's what we decided as a council. We also had a keynote speaker from somebody from EGAL, which is an organization that does the Draw the Line campaign, if any of you guys have heard of it before. It's about limiting violence against transgender students in our schools. And that was extremely interesting. I actually brought back a bunch of resources for the board, but I forgot them at home. I'll bring them next board meeting, that I got some free resources that were pretty interesting. Yeah, and the conference was very successful. Everything went pretty well, and we're looking forward to our next conference at, that's in February, so board councils conference, and doing initiatives there. So pass it on to Jovan.
So we're in the midst of preparing for our first student senate meeting, which is occurring next Tuesday, October 13th. And I've been sending a lot of emails back and forth between principals, and it looks like that our, based on the registration that we've had, that the attendance for this meeting is probably going to be the biggest that we've had so far. So we're really, really excited. We're making sure that this first meeting is well-packed with a lot of fun stuff, so we keep our centers entertained the entire year. Right now, the agenda's looking like that we'll have kind of basics, like, of what student senate is first, like about half an hour or so, and then afterwards, we're going to have a speaker coming in from the Halton Learning Foundation, talking about what their initiatives are and what their role is in the board, and then have an activity with them. And then, one of the things, like I said at the beginning of the year, one of our goals is to reintroduce the student voice report into our board. And so I did meet with our equity lead, Mary Jane Farish, about that, the possibility of reintroducing a student voice report. And so we're looking into having kind of a question-building period during our first student senate meeting, kind of formulating what the questions would be if we were to have that student voice report, and what would the questions look like if we were to have that open kind of forum discussion? So we're really, really excited. We attempted to do that kind of student voice report last year, but I think this year will be much, much more professional, because now we've got people from the board working on it, and I'm really excited for what this year holds.
I think. Anybody's welcome to come to our meetings. It's on next Tuesday, yeah, next Tuesday, right in this very room, from seven to nine. Or no, this one's six, six to eight. So if you, anybody, you can just drop in, or if not, we have plenty of meetings throughout the year you could go to. Yeah? If you have any questions, you can talk to us after or now, or email us. All the meeting dates are up on that fancy website, htsbstudentsenate.com. So you can look there if you ever are curious.
And the last thing I want to add is that I think the mental health team is going to be having their first meeting tomorrow, so I'll also be there as well, representing our student voice for that. Thank you.
Great. Sounds like you guys have been busy. We have a couple comments or questions for you, trustee Oliver.
Through you Chair. So thank you for those reports. Sounds like you guys have a really busy start to the new school year. I'm curious if you had a chance to look at whether all the schools have a representative for the senate? And if you would be able to share with us electronically upcoming dates of your meetings, so that we can try and attend? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's on the website, if that helps, or do you want us to email it to you, too? If you just go to the website, it's slash meeting-dash-dates, pretty easy. Or you can find it on the website. And as for the process, we emailed out to all the schools and have twice. So, and we've been trying to get persistent. If, it would be great if you, as trustees, could double-check if everybody has a representative from your schools, and that would be great as well. But that's our goal, is to have a representative from each school, and they do have the, or the principals are sent those opportunities. So hopefully, we get all that we want.
Yeah, I'm just, I was looking through the emails today. A lot of schools, because it's still the beginning of the year, they want to have their student council presidents come, and they haven't fully elected those. So our attendance for the first meeting might be a little bit lower, but our second meeting, it'll definitely be much higher, because we'll have all those elections sorted out within the schools. Like I said, like I sent out a bunch of emails, and it's actually really, 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 really happy, because we're seeing schools that typically didn't have senators last year, they're, they have senators this year. So it's really, really nice to see that we have some new schools joining up there as well.
Thank you to anybody in the board who has promoted us. We greatly appreciate it.
I know somebody who's got a little bit more power than he had in the past, that may be able to twist some ours, too, so.
Similarist in schools that don't.
Trustee Harvey Hope. You're welcome. I'm pleased to report, after I don't know how many years, I guess as long as I've been here, Oak Filter Foger High School is sending you two senators. Hallelujah. And they are connected to the Red Devil Council, which is the student council. So they are not just two people that, you know, aren't coming from the massive kids. And they have one of the largest student councils that they've ever had, because they let any grade nine who was interested be involved, so a massive engagement kind of exercise. So you will have people who want to be there, not just popularity type of grade nines. So, like I said, you're welcome, and I had been talking to them for quite a long time, and they'd go, student what? And student trustee is who? So by co-mingling it with their student council and making it sort of part of being on the student council, I think that, that thing, and thanks to the principal who, I'm sure previous principals tried, but anyway, I managed to get one, so I'm glad. Thanks. Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to report that Blake Locke will also be sending some people. And at the school council meetings that I've been to so far, which isn't all of them, but they've also been talking about it. So whatever communications you've sent out have been, I think they've been really effective. So thanks for doing that.
Sounds like it's going to be a very good year. Great. Okay. So any other comments or questions for student trustees? Trustee Oliver.
Through you Chair. Sorry, I'm just looking at the website, actually, and it says the meeting date is October 14. Okay, so it's 13 for sure? Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we're now up to our notices of motion. Is there any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none? We're on our, up to our action items for our board meeting on October the 21st. And our first item is policy development and review policy. Trustee Graves, report 15119 on page 16 of your board package. Trustee Graves, would you like to speak to that?
One, two, even though he's not here tonight, thank Director Uwali, former Director Uwali, for all of his hard work on that, and also vice chair Collard, who took all of the notes and forwarded them on from, from that meeting to, to update this as per trustee requests.
I was wondering, is this something that trustees would like to waive the rules on tonight, so that it could get posted sooner than later? Are you on the speaker list? Sorry. Trustee Harvey Hope. Is this about waiving the rules?
Yes, it's about waiving the rules. This particular policy talks about how to follow policy and procedure, and I would respectfully request we not actually waive the rules. I, I mean, I understand, because that's, I may be getting them mixed up. Which one is the one to put it in place? This one's to post? Okay, so we can't do much harm in posting two weeks earlier. Okay, so then I take, I withdraw it. I, I just really do not want to start that development review policy process not following the policy.
No, it was to get it posted. Okay, now that we're clear. Okay, thank you. All right. So does, would someone like to waive the rules tonight? Vice Chair Collard, seconded by trustee Gravens. Is there any? Oh, trustee Gray would like to speak to waiving the rules? Well, can you speak to this after we waive the rules? Because we're on waiving the rules right now. Okay, so anybody would like to speak to waiving the rules? Trustee Graves. But you didn't post in, so I can't put the camera on you, but that's okay?
I'm okay with that. Just perhaps before we do the vote, I'm, I'm curious if what trustee Gray has to say affects the, so I'm wondering, I guess, if there's anybody who does want to sit and think on this for, for another two weeks before it comes to the board. So I just wanted to give people that opportunity to make sure that they've had enough time to review it and really chew on it before, before we do the vote.
Well, if we've already got the motion on the floor, it won't pass if people don't want it to pass tonight, correct? Okay. So all those in favor of waiving the rules? So that passes. So now we'll go back to the motion, which is, I, did you want to speak to it before I put it on the floor? Okay, just a minute then. Well, that's true, it has to be on the floor, so I'm sorry. I'm going to put it on the floor, and then you can speak to it, trustee Gray. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board's policy development and review policy, as appended to report 15119, be posted on the board's website for public input for a period of not less than 25 days, and that the policy and any return, input returned to the board for consideration at the second board meeting in November 2015. Moved by vice chair Collard, seconded by trustee Graves. Discussion. Just a minute. Trustee Gray.
Yes, I didn't support waiving the rules, because I, I find that there's an inconsistency in the document with regards to Director of Education and the capitalization, and the lack of consistency throughout made, it just gave me cause to be concerned. It's capitalized sometimes, it's not in other areas, and there seems to be no flow. So that's why I disagreed with waiving the rules tonight.
I believe those are just typing corrections that could be done very easily?
Agreed that they're housekeeping, but we're putting something forward as it makes sense.
We can amend it, so that those corrections are made that way, before it gets posted. Trustee Harvey Hope. As I'm usually the one that points those things out, and everybody, most people know why, I may not have done that this week. I know that the director's office manager, Ms. Gortmaker, usually would say, and I'll say it on her behalf, since she isn't here, those changes can be made before it's posted. So if you want to be really clear, we could amend the motion to say, as appended to report with associated language, you know, whatever you want to do, but it can be done before it's posted, because my guess is it won't be posted before Friday, anyway. But, you know, we've now got tape that says we got to fix some things. But yes, Director of Education should always be capital D, capital E, in most circumstances in this particular policy. And I believe I mentioned that from Halifax at one point on the phone, but I guess it didn't get into the final document. So we are going to document the changes, and then the final document. So we are going to document the changes and then we will, um, so we'll say um, with documented changes, how's that? Because we're documenting right here.
I would prefer with documented housekeeping changes.
Is that everyone okay with that? We actually need a motion to amend, though. Uh, trustee Greg Benz, seconded by trustee Papin. So it will, um, so the amendment would be with with housekeeping changes as appended to report. Okay, so just a minute, we'll have to vote on that. So see if there's something here I can use. Okay, so you're, you're not gonna like it because we've had no flexibility on topics, but it's gonna be, it's gonna say PVC consultation amendment. I can't do anything, I don't, I, the only way, other way we can do is vote by hands. Okay, so then we're going to vote by hands, we can't document it the other way. So the amendment will be with housekeeping changes as appended to re, to uh, the report, okay? All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. So the full motion now is be resolved the Halton District School Board's policy development and review policy as appended to report 15119. Be posted on the board's website for public input for a period of not less than 25 days, and that the policy and any input returned to the board for consideration at the second board meeting in November. Oh, no, I put it in the wrong spot, sorry. With, yes, I'm sorry. So I read it wrong. I'll try again. Be resolved the Halton District School Board's policy development and review policy with this, with housekeeping changes as appended to report 15119. Be posted on the board's website for public input for a period of not less than 25 days, and that the policy and any input returned to the board for consideration at the second board meeting in November 2015. Okay, any other further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. So that will be posted with the amendments. So our next item is the community partnership policy feedback. Uh, Director Miller, report 15123 on page 22 of your board package. Director Miller.
And senior manager Renzella will present for us.
Welcome, Mr. Back, welcome back, Mr. Renzella.
Ah, well, I, I wasn't, uh, uh, the, the policy before you has not been dramatically revised since it was last presented in June. I think there were some housekeeping amendments uh done. But generally speaking, I think all trustees received the, the two responses to the document. Um, and you know, and we have not amended the policies based on those responses, as you can well imagine. Um, I'm uh, again, it's before you this evening. I don't know if it's going to be voted on this evening because we have no, so it's gonna go to the 21st. Glad to answer any of the questions on the policy.
Do we have any comments or questions on the community partnership policy tonight for Mr. Renzella? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through your chair. Um, one of the things that sort of, I got some, I guess, feedback um, just from uh, my community. I redirected them to the website. Um, and I, and I got verbal feedback that um, uh, it would be wonderful for, I guess, future potential partners to know exactly where they're coming in. Um, I um, I'm referencing here what I saw on the Hamilton District School Board website. They had a um, I want to say a one-page um link that uh, you know, drew people's attention to, hey, uh, you know, community partners, community hubs, are you interested? Click here. Um, and then proceeded to provide a, I want to call it a web-based uh MLS-style uh opportunity to show people physically what uh, what opportunities there were. And also, um, if, if they wanted to become um, uh, to have a greater dialogue with the school on potential partnerships. Um, as our policy um falls out here, um, we have a list of um organizations who've, who've either signed up, elected to sign up, or who have been recruited to sign up. Um, but I'd like to make sure that we're not leaving anybody out, that the uh opportunity to find out about this um partnership is very clear. Um, and uh, that it doesn't just depend on receiving our long-term accommodation plan, 160-page document, um, to, to go through it. I, I would really appreciate something very quick and uh, and easy to use.
Generally speaking, I, I think um, we, we do have to manage, and, and the board has to approve the policies before we, we take the next step, uh, which is to identify what schools have space and, and offering that up, which reviewing the Hamilton District School Board website, uh, they have, and, and they've been managing that process for a few years now. So we still need to, to get through that process. But I do want to ensure that any, that we post on our website, the community planning policies, once they're approved, uh, just directing uh, potential community partners to the policies, advising them if they want to be informed in future, who to contact, uh, so that, as you're well aware, we have a list, but it's just a minimum. We can add people to the list as, as we move forward, as, as we, as, as we see other community partners come to the table. And then, once we start and, and start going through the process of initiating those uh, those potential partnerships, um, we would then, of course, engage the community. Uh, and you know, the options that have been presented by uh, Hamilton Wentworth will be, will be considered. Um, no, they're the, we wouldn't envision the LTAP to, you know, everybody has access to it, but it, it really is not going to be an identifier of what spaces are available. This kind of sets a tone where they may be available. And then, if you, if you read the policies, they kind of drill down as to what we're looking at, and, and there's certain criteria that we need to look at before we uh, before the board puts them out for public interest's sake.
Okay, um, thank you for that clarification. Um, so with respect to potential partners who um are new to this process, uh, what sort of awareness, marketing, opportunity, uh, can we give them at this moment, at day one, to find out about this? What is it going to, what could this look like? What could we, uh, where can we send them? How easy to access this information? We want to keep this very, very simple and, and, and quick. We want to make sure that we're not, uh, we're recruiting, encouraging, and inviting.
Um, I, you know, as I said, I would appreciate any responses or feedback from trustees on that. Again, I think we, we typically have been doing that through the public, uh, through our website. But again, as outlined in the policies, we do have an annual community planning partnerships meeting where we invite everybody, including those on the list, to come forth and discuss the, and, and review the options with respect to available spaces. So, you know, that is, you know, that is a requirement under the ministry guidelines as well as in our policies. As to engaging other opportunities, you know, as I said, there's, you know, we'll have to discuss that internally as to what options there may, there may be, including, you know, press releases. Uh, but again, I think identified on the website um would be, you know, pronounced, we forwarded it to all our community partners, municipalities are aware of it. And um, hopefully that information will be, be getting out. But I, I, you know, we'll have to discuss it internally.
Thank you, trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much. Uh, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, there are a number of housekeeping items in here that uh, were forwarded, so hopefully those will be helpful. Um, second, I think that it's really important to develop the materials and opportunities from the perspective of potential partners. So just echoing what trustee Reynolds said in terms of, we love the LTAP and we love policy, our policies, but other people don't really love them, I would imagine, and probably don't want to go from this to that to, you know, to find the, the straight line to, is this an opportunity for me right now? So I just, that's all, develop materials from the perspective of potential partners. And lastly, I do have a question. It's under number five, uh, consideration of opportunities for sharing unused space in schools with community partners. Uh, it says, based on the LTAP, the superintendent of business services and facility services will provide a report to admin council identifying a list of schools that present suitable partnership opportunities subject to the following criteria. And criterion G is facility condition. So I just wondered, is that saying that um, where some of our weaker facilities may not be appropriate, or we wouldn't want to offer some of our shiny and new facilities, or what does that mean?
Uh, I think the facility condition is, you know, can we um, add on to the facility? Is there space? Is it usable in the context of, again, it's, it's a broad stroke type of criteria. Um, you know, again, we, we want to say, can the facility accommodate uh, some additional tenants? And uh, and so facility condition like anything else, it has to be considered. You know, is it going to say yea or nay? No, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't block off anybody if they're, you know, our newer facilities are typically already at capacity. So it's not where the spaces, it's typically in our older facilities where the space is. And, and I think we have to consider whether or not that school can accommodate some additional tenants.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, uh, thank you very much for your report tonight. And we'll look forward to this coming back in two weeks. So our next item is the trustee expense policy feedback. Director Miller, report 15124 on page 30 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Um, there were no comments to this, so as you can see the recommendation, um, you can see it. So I'd, either Chair Amos or I can answer questions, but we had zero comments when it was posted, so.
Trustee Harvey Hope. Thank you, through you. Um, I, I hope that means we did our job right and people agree with us. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, the italics did not get fixed from PBNG till the time it was posted. It should only have been italicized, the ones that have been changed. So it should have been um, only 4.8, 4.11, and 4.16 should be the ones that are italicized in this particular po, um, thing. So perhaps that could be fixed for the next round of board package. Um, the other piece is, I know I may have missed.
Can you say which ones again, please?
Well, in the revision history, it says revised June 15th to clarify, 4.8, 4.11, and 4.16. I may be wrong, but um, the italicized in this report that you're supposed to attach for us to approve it now, should only be italicizing anything is changing. And it should un-italicize before, once it's approved. The italicize is only to help people figure out how not to read the whole thing again. Um, so that's one thing. And then I know somewhere, and again, I apologize, this last six weeks have been kind of crazy. Um, I seem to recall getting an answer, what adopted versus last revised versus review date, because adopted is new. Um, but I'm kind of getting lost between the January 11th, 2012, and the revision history where there's three or four between then and now. So I'm surprised the last revised isn't June or November. Um, I don't know why we're going all the way back to 12. And then adopted, eh, I'm not sure what that means yet, either in this context, because we adopted it in January, retroactive to December 1st. So that would be a January date, not a November date. So I'm not exactly sure what all those numbers mean. And so perhaps between now and um, the board package going out the next time, we could um, we could clarify it. And also perhaps nail it down with a legend somewhere so that we don't have to keep asking the same question, please. It should actually be in our policy development review policy, which I do acknowledge, I did not get a chance to read the final draft from the time of Halifax until now. So it may actually be in that report 15119, what those words mean, but um. So the comments have been captured and it'll come back hopefully revised for the next meeting for approval. Trustee L Harrison.
Hello, thank, thank you. Uh, through you, Madam Chair. Um, two things. Firstly, the CIO, is that appropriate to leave in or to take out at this point in time? And, and second, it's, there's a number of, probably a search and replace if it needs to be come out. And then just the last thing at the very end, with respect to who is on this subcommittee, I think that's still a holdover from the last uh term.
So we've captured that.
The subcommittee, the thing at the bottom too? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we've captured all those changes, so it'll come back revised for the next meeting. Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Just a request, especially when we're gonna have four for action or three for action, a lot of them coming for action. If it's, if there's any way to highlight the changes between the first board package and the second, um, I know we're now starting to try and make sure we say revised, but to be honest, sometimes it's really hard to remember two weeks later or three weeks later, what you were looking for in the revisions. So I don't know if it's like a preamble to the, to the, to the report, not the recommendation changing and not the report changing, but somewhere another little line or a, I don't know, even an email, in the email for all I care. Does, I just, sometimes I wonder how to track what was changed.
Not as important for a one-pager, but really important when it's 10.
Right, well, um, we'll pass that information along and we'll ask to see what can be done. Thank you. Okay, is there anything else? Seeing nothing else right now, then we'll come back for, this will come back in two weeks for approval. So our next item is the associate director vacancy. Director Miller, report 15125 on page 36 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Uh, you've got the report and um, we obviously need an associate director because I'm now the director and there's no associate director. So we'd like to move forward on this in, in initiating a process to uh, hire an associate director of the HDSB.
Thank you. Uh, trust, Vice Chair Collard.
Trust vice chair Collin.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules to decide on this tonight so that we can get this ball rolling a little bit more quickly than waiting for another two weeks.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask if anybody wanted to do that. So moved by vice chair Collin to waive the rule, seconded by trustee Garbets. Just a minute, I have to see if we have another wave of rules here, just a minute. Oh, where did that one? Okay, I found one. Okay, is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor. Trustee Daniele, are you still there? Okay, well, I'm just going to end voting. So that passes unanimously. Okay, so now I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board direct the director of education to advertise internally and externally for the position of associate director. Moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Garbets. Is there any discussion on this tonight?
Nope, but I'm back now, sorry.
Trustee Gray.
Yes, I wonder if the, if there's any consideration in the recommendation to add a timeframe? In other words, that we've started the process, but are we looking to have this a process that's one month, two months, three months in length? Do we have a, I guess, a desired timeframe in mind?
Through Chair Amos to trustee Gray. I will work with HR to follow the same process that we followed in previous years around associate director, so that we're consistent all the time. And that is usually about a month or so. We'd like to move on to that. We don't want to circumvent the process that we've followed every other process, every other year. So it would be approximately a month.
Trustee Pappen.
Thank you, through Chair Amos to Director Miller. My question was also around timeframe and considering all the important things we have coming up in the next few months and weeks. Also, the priority of having a associate director in place as soon as possible?
So noted. Okay, well, by waiving the rules will allow the process to start a little sooner, so hopefully we'll, that'll happen a little sooner. Okay, seeing no other speakers to the motion, all those in favor. Trustee Pappen? Thank you. That passes unanimously, thank you very much. You can get moving now. Okay, so we're now to our information items for tonight, because it says meeting October twenty-first, I believe that's just information items for tonight, isn't that correct? Okay. So our first one is staffing update. Executive Officer, former Associate Director Blackwell, report one five one two six on page thirty-seven of your board package. Welcome.
Thank you.
Executive Officer Blackwell.
This is a very brief report for trustees for your information about staffing. You received a report on September sixteenth. That was about opening day, opening week. This is about what's happened since then. Really pleased to see secondary enrollments are plus one thirty-four, elementary enrollments one twenty-seven. It describes what we've done with our staffing, how we got students and teachers in place in elementary. So I'll be pleased to take questions that you have.
Do we have any comments or questions about this item tonight? Seeing none, I do. I, I think this is great news, we were able to recall people from the surplus list and, I mean, to me, this is a good news report. So thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Yeah, very much so, we were able to solve most of our secondary challenges and we got kids with their real life elementary teacher for the rest of the year on Monday the twenty-eighth. And that's probably as fast as you can do it, given all the parameters of Bill two seven four and last minute surprises. So very much so, I'm really, want to thank the superintendents and the principals and HR for really, really pushing hard through this.
And I'd like to echo that, especially with the processes you've put in place around Regulation two seventy-four, I think things move a bit even smoother every year and despite any of the obstacles. So thank you very much on behalf of the whole system. Our next information item is the annual water testing report from Superintendent Collin, report one five one two zero on page thirty-eight of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Collin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to the trustees, this report is one we try and bring relatively early in the school year, because the water testing that we're referring to does take place over the course of the summer. And about this time, we bring back a summary of what has been discovered in the schools and the action plans that follow. So the regulation really pertains to lead in the drinking water and a requirement to not only test for it, but then once having tested for it, develop an action plan that generally involves the flushing of the water loops in the schools prior to occupants coming into the building, and that's done on a daily basis in most cases. The interesting thing is doing the test during the summer is probably about the worst case scenario, because it can sit for several weeks before it gets tested with absolutely no circulation or flow. But that is probably the best time to get the worst case test, which gives us the best result for an action plan after that. So if you have to take any questions, I should point out, I have had a few questions prior to the meeting. The first one relating to the lack of a legend and the terminology ND, none detected, is what that refers to. The other one pertains to the actual units that were used. The actual table is in milligrams, whereas the chart is labeled in micrograms. So there's about a three decimal place difference between those two. But when you use the ten microgram unit, you'll see that the chart using the micro, the milligram rather rating is a sort of a three decimal version as opposed to six. Six would become quite cumbersome to use in this particular chart. So we will change the labeling to have the labels corrected, the numbers in the charts are correct, if you're using milligrams. If you have to take any questions related to the chart for the program itself, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this report for Superintendent Collin tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yeah, just one clarifying one, the ones that are highlighted, some of them were run more than once. I believe that's why they were highlighted, right? So that you can see that it's, that they sort of had successive tests. And just to clarify that basically that point zero one zero equals ten UG slash L, so that anything, if you go zero, one, anything over than a zero, that's when it should highlight. And I'm wondering whether there is a way to do kind of a different kind of shading. I mean, I literally looked through the whole list trying to match up the ones the report said. So I just, because of the fact that there were, so I, but if there was an easier way to put a star or something on the chart, maybe that would help people versus trying to read the legend, although it's a good grade nine science metric conversion lesson.
Through the chair, I think what we can do, Excel has the capability to have numbers sorted and treat them differently depending on a variable that you place into the cell. We could actually put a parameter on there that sorts the cell and says anything over the actual trigger point. So that way, if it was over, it would report as such, and if we typed it incorrectly, it would show up as an error when we know it isn't, and that would pick up on that. Because there was one also, I think you pointed out on Sir Ernest McMillan, it probably shouldn't have been highlighted otherwise, or sorry, should have been highlighted, but the reading should have been a decimal place higher, right? So we could, we could put that parameter into the cells and have it do it on a more automated basis. The other one you referred to about multiple readings at a location, once we have a detection of lead and a program in place, the only way that we can eventually clear that. So if we suspect that it may have been an erroneous test in the first place, or that something has occurred in the supply water system in the building, that should now make it that we don't have a high lead reading on the standing and therefore we could dispose of it. We actually have to do, I believe it's three subsequent readings to, and I think it's a week or two weeks apart. So there is, there is a sequence that if we go back in and test, 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 and confirm that there's, it's within the standards on all three of the subsequent ones, you can then remove it from the requirement of the flushing.
If there were twelve schools, I, I just didn't think enough, either then not enough of them were highlighted. So it, it didn't match, like if it was, some of them were, their standing was too high, then they had the three flushes, and other ones their standing was too high and they didn't have the three. So I'm just, I was just having a hard time figuring out what the criteria was for multiple tests and whether it was after flushing continued to be a problem, then you had the multiple tests. So I think that was the differentiation, but it's very, it's a little clear and you sort of had to work your way through it. So again, if we could say the legend or the sorting or something makes it very clear, you know, the results. I mean, it's, it's great news that obviously the schools are doing it. I'm really pleased with the, the not detectables. I thought it was not done, so that's why I wanted to make sure it was not detected. So I like, you know, this, this is, I've seen this now for years and years and we've been making immense progress. So I'm really pleased to see the, the improvements we've had on this.
Thank you, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through the chair, to Superintendent, Superintendent Collin. So two questions regarding the record keeping. Does your staff sort of track trends and maybe blips from past years to sort of see if there's schools that are periodically coming up or they're, they're increasing? I mean, do we have any sort of, is someone evaluating that? And my second question is, with the twelve schools, are we communicating with the schools? And do we need to make parents aware of what we've, what we were doing to rectify how we're complying, in compliance with the, the Ontario reg?
Through the chair, the trending one is one, we certainly do have the historical data, as we've said, we do this, we've done this for a number of years, we have that. There are a number of schools where trends have already been determined that that is a particular school that we suspect it will fail on the standing water, but it will be okay after the flushing. We have others where we don't expect it to and it does, so that gives us cause for, I'll say more investigation, that it shouldn't have given it three years in the past, it was fine, and all of a sudden this year or something occurred. Again, it can be an erroneous task, it can be a result, or it could be something that actually has occurred to the water supply to the building. So those trends are monitored by our staff. Your question also mentioned reporting. I should also note that these reports have to be maintained on site for inspection by ministry. So ministry staff will come in and verify that this is being done, not only the test, the one-time test as we refer to here, but the actual flushing log. So each day that the caretakers go into the building and do perform the five, ten minute, whatever the prerequisite flushing duration is, they need to record that and where they did it. Those logs have to be maintained and are in fact inspected by ministry inspectors to make sure it's being done. Notice at the school for parents, I have to check that, I don't know that we send anything, we certainly don't send it to parents. We would send the information to the school, but I'm not sure whether they then further circulate that to parents or post on the school site. I have to follow that, I'm not sure on that one. Check.
Thank you, trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So schools are flushed on a daily basis for a certain amount of time, whether it be five or ten minutes. And how, is the testing only done annually and with follow-up if a deficiency or over exceedances is experienced?
Through the chair, that's correct. So the flushing would occur daily. In some cases, again, where the trend is indicated to us that this school may have the need for the continued flushing, we would just continue to do that. If it's a school where we've had three or four years of clear records and there's some reason why we suspect the reading that particular year might not be accurate, we might go back in and do the test, or if they were particularly high, go in and try and find out there is something causing an actual problem, and then do the retesting. So it's a little bit of a two-pronged thing, where we suspect it's routine, we wouldn't go back in and retest throughout the year. Others, we would follow up and pursue a solution of some other sort to try and alleviate the need to have, say, longer durations of flushing and multiple locations of flushing as well.
Can I keep going? Okay, so are there any ministry programs in place through education or environment and climate change to replace lead pipes in schools?
The interesting thing is, many of our schools have no lead pipes in them. In fact, most of them have no lead pipes in them. There's, there's been a lengthy debate about what the source of the lead in the water system may or may not be. We've had brand-new schools, brand-new, have lead exceedances on day one. Yet we know that none of the piping in the building contains any source of lead, none of the copper, or sorry, none of the solder used in the joints, because that was one of the, I'll say earliest sources of lead in drinking water was the actual lead, the solder containing lead. That has all been not only specified out of all the tender documents, it has been inspected. So it's not just that we write it in the document and assume it's lead-free, we've actually gone in after the construction and tested to confirm that the solder that was used is lead-free. And having done all of that, there's still a lead exceedance. Now, in our opinion, there's only one other potential source of lead in that water, and it's from somewhere other than the building, right? Municipalities will verify beyond any doubt that their drinking water is certainly safe and well within all the levels as it leaves the plant. I don't believe that we've ever had that same commitment that down the road, like all the way to the school, whatever, that there may not be something somewhere in the distribution system that may be contributing to that. But there are cases where we've gone into a particular building, tested every single, I'll say, possible source, and determined that it cannot be from within the particular building that we're in. There are others where we've done some things, we've changed that piping and that, but I don't believe we have any actual source that would be contributing on the lead side, other than some of the older schools that would have lead-containing solder, right? Programs, the only one I'm aware of is actually a residential one for some residential circumstances where there are lead leaders coming from the main into the building. Most of our schools, I don't, I don't have any of our schools have services that small. That was a relatively small pipe size that was used to do that. Ours are generally sort of an industrial, commercial-sized feed and typically weren't lead in the first place. Haven't seen too many of those.
Thank you, trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you, through the chair, to Mr. Collin. With regards to the report that we have here, it's made clear to us that the province of Ontario has standards and that we test to those standards. I wonder if the province of Ontario has other tests that are considered for those schools that are in perhaps a country-like setting, drawing on artesian wells and in proximity to farmland?
There's, there's a number of things that occur depending on the water source. So we have a couple of schools that are fed by a cistern, so they have no water source on site or deliver, or sorry, delivered to them in an automated fashion. It's literally trucked water brought in, distributed into a holding tank, and then back into the building. That was to alleviate using a local water source that may have been compromised at some point. And there are a significant number of regulations that do relate to the maintenance and operation of wells. So our well sites, I believe, were down to only three at this point that are actually on a well system. We had five at one point, and as municipal water supplies and sewer systems have reached those locations, we've tied into the, I'll say, the more sustainable water supplies that are there. I think we're down to about three. There are a number of regulations, probably more so than the municipal water. There are, there are regulations that relate to the municipal water supply, so in our case, we don't have to worry so much about the supply, but in our rural settings, we not only have to rebuild distribution in the building, we also have to be concerned about the supply source, particularly if it's our well. And there are a number of those things. There's also a much more stringent list of items that get tested for and on a more frequent There's also a much more stringent list of items that get tested for and on a more frequent basis if they're in that particular circumstance. Okay?
Thank you. And I don't see any further speakers on this topic, so thank you very much, superintendent Cullen. I guess you're up again. Stay in the hot seat.
Thank you for having me back so soon.
Yes, and we're now talking about closing the gap update, report 15121, page 42 of your board package.
Thank you, madam chair. This is really an update. We've been working, as you know, on the close the gap from both a fundraising standpoint and priority-setting perspective. We've now moved into what we believe to be sort of the action phase and we thought it would be appropriate about this time of the school year to give trustees an update as to where we were. When we last met to talk about the program, it was really about setting the priorities and what the focus was going to be. Facility service staff and the purchasing department have now been working on the actual identification of, I'll say, consultant support for the various projects. They've done further investigation into the issues as they relate to both the electrical and the air conditioning. And we've started to now literally go through the schools and identify them by, by zone and by area. So we thought it was probably a wise thing to do to come back, let the trustees know precisely which schools we're working on and what the rollout will be over the course of the next couple of years to do the electrical upgrades. And in most cases, then followed by the air conditioning upgrade. It'd really be frustrating for a school to have brand-new air conditioners sit there and not be able to activate them. So we figured we'd do the, the process in that regard. And there are a few cases where because of a particular area or zone of a school, it can be done in, in a different sequence than the balance of the school. So we, we thought we'd bring them. So if you look at the charts and the tables, you'll see that some of them may have a zone or two pulled forward, being done earlier than the rest of the school, but the balance of most of the schools hinges upon having the electrical service in place and distribution system to them in effect. Staff are working right now, as I say, with the consultants on the actual specifications for what types of systems, where they'll go and how they'll function, those types of things. So be happy to take any questions related to that, but it really is at this stage a, an interim report on where we are and where we're going. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And you do have some questions. Trustee Daniele.
Yes, I just, I'm assuming that they were completely and totally identified according to the priorities that were listed in the motion. And my reason for asking is that there's a lot of schools on there, a lot of money being spent, but there's not a single one in Milton. And I'm assuming that that's because the older schools in Milton simply didn't rise high enough on the priority list?
Through the chair, trustee Daniele. I, I, I'm going to be somewhat guessing at this because I didn't bring the, the total priority chart with us, but we did produce it and share it with the board at an earlier point in time. I would expect that most of the new schools, obviously in Milton, are not going to be a contender for the close the gap program. And many of the others either have single-story or their two-story sections may already in fact be air-conditioned. So I think we'd have to go back and look at the actual list. I don't remember it being that specific, that a particular geographic area was, was sort of clustered in that sense, but all of the schools were listed in order based on the criteria that we had reviewed with the board on the early report. But I can look back into that and, and look into some specific ones if that would help.
If you wouldn't mind looking into, because I don't believe that MV has air conditioning and it's not on the list anywhere. So I'm just curious, if you could just find that out for me and pass it off to me, away from the board table, that's fine.
Okay. Trustee Evans.
Through your, your chair, Amos, to superintendent Cullen. I'm very happy, of course, to see Clarksdale and especially Rolling Meadows, because I've, I've definitely heard from parents and they'll be, they're going to be very glad to see that air conditioning will be in their schools. But talking about the single-story schools, are, is there a plan in the future to look at them? Because I know I've had requests from like schools like Kilbride, that of course they're single-story, but it's built in such an odd manner that I think the airflow is atrocious in there.
At this point, I would have to say that the, the undertaking that has sort of outlined and encompassed all of the close the gap initiative at this stage is probably going to far exceed the available resources. So that was part of the earlier, I think, baby steps that we took around what should we do with this, what is our intent and, and how are we going to best use those resources? So I would have to say at this point in time, I don't believe that we'll be able to get through what we've got on the table with the money we've got to enable us to go on to a phase that would see us doing air conditioning on singles, single-floor schools at this stage. That's just my, I'm looking at the big picture saying, I think that's the case. Now, having said that, I'm seeing a very interesting shift at the provincial level around their focus on doing something very similar. I'm starting to see a very strange pattern developing that as Halton reaches these milestone brilliant ideas that somebody catches on and follows the pattern, the ministry, I think, is beginning to realize that there's not going to be as many new schools built in the province because of the declining enrollment issue. They're going to be left with a lot of existing schools. How do they best use their dollars and how do they best maintain and deliver facilities that are going to be useful to the community and to the education sector in particular? I think it's going to sound something very similar like close the gap. They may have a new name for it, but it's possible we see some provincial assistance on the funding side, which might get us into, into that level of, of deliverable. Again, many school boards have only small rural, single-floor schools and for them to roll a program out that didn't address those would seem kind of useless. Okay? So there may be some hope. I don't think it's a local solution based on what I've seen as far as our demand and our dollar availability at this point in time are. It might have to be something bigger than that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice chair, Cullen.
Hi. Thank you very much for tonight's report. As you know, that Pineland Public School was listed as the highest priority elementary school to, yes, to receive air conditioning. However, there's just not the availability of power to that area because of it being on a residential street. And we understand the limitations there. I'm hopeful that the board will find alternative methods of cooling for the school and work with the school to provide more shade, perhaps better airflow, especially on the second floor. And I'm happy to work with you on that.
I was very much in jest when I made my comment. You know, we, we are very well aware that the very top priority that our system brought to our attention was the only school in the system where we can't do it. So that was a bit of a frustration, certainly on our part. We'll look into some of the, there are some other creative things that, that can be done. Our staff are looking at a number of different things. They're actually investigating some entirely new technologies that we haven't used yet. So there, this has afforded them some opportunity to really get into some areas that we haven't had the reason to actually investigate in the past. So there may be something that comes up. And we still haven't given up on the potential that somewhere down the road, the entire area around the school will get some sort of a, an enhanced electrical service that would enable us to do this, but that's outside of our control. That's the, the bigger issue there.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the closing the gap update tonight? Seeing none, I think you need to stay right there. Your next report is elementary school design guidelines, report 15122. You're up again, superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, madam chair. I think they cluster these so I don't have to walk as much anymore.
Well, you must feel like you need to.
The, the school design guidelines, just by way of recap for trustees, and again, this is, this is an update as to where we are. This came about when we reached a point in our capital construction program that we have schools yet to build in the very near future. We don't actually have what I would call a shovel-ready application for the ministry dollars because we don't own the sites and don't have access to them to start. So it gave us, I think, a fairly rare opportunity to slow the pace and have a look at what we've been doing and is there something we can do different or do better? So we were able to retain the services of one of the architects and we had a number of them compete on the process, but one of the architects that has built a number of our schools, it happens to be Hossick, Peter Hossick and Associates, to review not only some of our recent designs, but also several other school boards. And that has then allowed us to take some concepts back to a combination of people both within and outside the board to look at what could or what should we be doing when we get to the next phase of new construction. It's really here for the purposes of checking in with trustees to say, are we going to the right level of detail? We're not asking the architect to design a single standalone new school and walk away. We're not saying, give us a concept that's just a stick line drawing that has no meat or details to it. It has to be significant enough and have enough specificity to it that when we provide this document to another architect or another team of consultants, that they can follow the guide and produce a school that will have all of the components in it that we would like to see there, again, based on a combination of the evolution of our designs and any other innovative ideas that may come to the table. A classic example, if I may, for one, is the full-day kindergarten. We did a five-year rollout. What we built in year one was nothing like what we built in year five. We think our year five design is probably the most functional and usable that we can for that program and therefore it will become sort of the incorporated standard as we move forward. We may not have done the same thing with a classroom, a music room, a library. So, so that's really the concept there. There's a number of things that also relate to the internal operating elements of the building. Many of the staff are not too concerned about what holds the roof up, but we certainly are. So there's a number of those pieces of the puzzle as well. So the preamble that goes with this is a little bit of the philosophy around what we're trying to accomplish, how we've done it, and then, and I would all classify it as sort of an executive summary of the index so that you can see the areas that we're kind of go at, going after. But the real report is a binder that's about three inches thick that has the very specific room-by-room details that's available, if you'd like to look at it now, but it's again, still in development to get us to what those are. So we just want to make sure how we got the right spaces and we got the right content and we're talking to the right people. Are we going to wind up with the right end result? Having said all of that, I'm hopeful that somewhere in the very near future, we get to actually put this to the test and build Milton number 10, which is our intent. When we do that, we may only be partway through this process and that's not a, not necessarily a bad thing. It means we get to take it to what stage it's at and develop it and actually use it in a practical application, confirm that it can be built, it can be built within budget and it meets all those, and then once again, critique that design to move on to the next and, and adjust the guideline accordingly. So again, it's really here to check in with the board that here's where we are in the process, here's our expectation as to where we continue to move towards, and if we're not moving in the right path, obviously now's the right time to know that. And it's also about garnering some of that input on the specific designs that are here as well. So be happy to take any questions. This is a very large document with lots to it, so I don't know whether this will be the right forum for that or certainly if trustees feel they would like to take it away, look at it. It is an ongoing one, so at any point in the process, we certainly welcome comments or input.
We have to go on the list. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, madam chair. Just three comments. Firstly, with respect to site design criteria, I wonder about the equity lens piece and whether that's a principle, so i.e. the placement or the planning for our special needs kids and where they find their best home within our school facilities. That's point number one. Point number two is overlaying our active transportation conversation with traffic circulation and parking. There is pedestrian access in here, but I think if we can marry those things with bike access and circulation rolling at that kind of thing, it would support some of our other conversations. And thing number three is with respect to ancillary spaces. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to plan for something like a school council or a home and school, a home, given the valuable things that volunteers contribute to our schools. It would be great to not get the leftovers and, you know, the space that nobody else is using or get, get kicked out of.
Those are all excellent comments and it's precisely what we'd be looking for. We may wind up doing is coming back to get more detail on the concept and what that may look like. So we will certainly follow up on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair. To add on to trustee Al Harrison's questions or comments, I'm also wondering if we have guidelines. I understand this is about the internal, but I wonder if we have guidelines around the optimal placement of a school along a street or road with respect to addressing any air quality issues from the resulting traffic around the school. And so that would be looking at placement of the playground, kindergarten play area, any fields that the school would have and use for physical education, that sort of thing.
Two parts to that, if I may, through, sorry, through the chair. In the selection and designation of our school sites, we do have parameters. Now, it's not part of this exercise, but when Mr. Renzella and his staff are looking at the actual selections, they do involve the facilities department and how might this site lend itself to a school, given that it's on a curve or a road or a park or a hill? So there are a number of those things that we do have as parameters when we are dealing with the developers and with the municipalities around designating the overall school site. Drilling down to the more specifics, but now that we've got the site, where does the building go in relationship to the residential homes, the roads, the parking, those types of things are a great source of debate when we go to the planning process. So we meet with the municipality and the municipal planners and there have, I would say, the building permit process is easy. The site planning one is the most complex and involved because there are a number of parameters the municipality wants to ensure are maintained and they're those that we want. So in my opinion, it generally becomes a compromise and I would have to say, we have been able to walk away from most of the settings saying, okay, that's as good as we're going to get it. But there have been occasions when it has not worked out to be a good relationship between what they're trying to accomplish and what we are. So we could write them in as things we like, but we can't dictate them. We're going to have to go through a process to get there. I think we're certainly aware of them and try to comp as much as we can. Okay?
Thank you. Trustee, have you hope?
Thank you. Through you, madam chair, to superintendent Cullen. I really like this document. I know we had conversations about how to, how to, from an internal audit type of way, do we do this process the same way? Is each school done the same way? So I really like that. I'm wondering, I think the theme of some of my comments will be the, what used to be called the good neighbor consultations, the where in here do we talk about citing the, how the building faces and what it looks like in relation to the neighbors, in relation to what kind of houses there are? I know in some schools, we've, you know, moved them around, we've put bushes in certain places. In some schools, you know, where, how we did it works really well. In other schools, we may have missed the boat on this active transportation because the way the pedestrians have to get there and avoid cars may not quite work well in the, in the scheme of things. Communications, including making sure that the community is involved. Community use requirements, again, the, the good neighbors and how you do that. Building orientation was the neighbors. There's one where it says, okay, you've got a piece where if you're going to have a childcare center. And I noticed that on the draft plan, it has storage, exterior storage for the childcare center, but it doesn't have exterior storage if you don't have a childcare center. So one of the things that I've noticed is that unfortunately, similar to the school council, that, you know, where, what closet can they have their keep it on-site stuff? Or where's the pizza supplies held and it's on top of some fridge somewhere instead of a nice closet? If you're going to have one out of the four kindergarten rooms or two out of the four kindergarten rooms be used for the before and after-school program, usually that means the children don't leave their coats when whichever of the eight rooms they were in and they need to move them. Then where do you put their coats and where do you put their stuff that they carried out of one room? And especially now, we're starting to see two sets of four and so it's sometimes around the corner. So some of those kinds of things, I don't know, have been taken into account. Also, my pet peeve has always been kindergarten hallways aren't always big enough to handle the portable traffic. So the, the way it looks is fine, except that once you realize that the lockers for the kids that are in the portables are actually going through where you thought was perfectly fine for the little ones and all of a sudden you have the seven eights coming through there. And if we turn around and put... there, and if we turn around and put any kindergarten children in the hallway, then we've gone, it sort of undoes the whole idea of keeping them separate on different floors. So those are just some of the kind of the ideas, but I'm a real fan of indexes, and some reason I love this document, and I will be going through it further later. So I gather that this is going to be a public kind of document-ish?
Through the chair, yes, it will be. We would hope to still continue to do consultation on it, and again, we don't see this as ever being an ending process. This has the ability that each time we either build a school or renovate a space, continue to modify it. So at whatever stage it is at is really the current day standard that we would then give to the architectural team to start to work to on their design.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through the chair. I'd like to touch on a couple of comments that trustee Al Harrison had made, which I also share. The one being with respect to the standards for the special education classes. I would like to think that our SEAC group, Special Education Advisory Committee, had had a hand in that consultation, primarily to ensure that we have, we're looking through an equity lens of inclusion, that we're not designing schools, that we're designing schools that will eliminate barriers to inclusion. And I'm, just from a quick glance, I see in the one design, we have a life skills class beside kindergarten classes, and my first thought is, life skills could be grade four to eight. And I don't know what our community parents would think about not integrating into the school widely. So that would be my one comment. My second one is with respect to having a school council room, or I'd like to see a community room. And, you know, we've discussed community hubs this evening, thinking that a one room with an accessible washroom, and it could be used for school councils, could be used for community groups to rent out, that had its own lockable space so that it's not, it has a certain access to the school that they don't have to go through the school from a safety perspective. But I just, having been to partnering Aldershot today, which happens at Holy Rosary, they have created just that in their school, a corner that is accessible to the public, sort of cut off to the rest of the school, has its washroom, and they let it out for community rentals. So that would be my only other comment, that I thought that would be really cool to have something already created with the community in mind, rather than making the community work around renting the auditorium, or the gymnasium, or just a classroom, having something that's sort of self-contained.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you, through you, Chair. To Superintendent Cullen, I echo Leah's comments. It's a great idea to have it accessible to the outside and not to the inside. And the, I was also going to say too, that I would like to see these types of plans go through SEAC and also the accessibility committee for just exactly those reasons about the placements of the rooms and which rooms the children in life skills classes use, and would some of those be on the second floor, some of these specialty classrooms, art, music, and so on? Just the placement of those, things like placement of the elevator, or certain classrooms relative to the washrooms for students with accessibility issues and so on. And then the last piece I was thinking of, just as the election is coming up, and I think we had talked about this during the last election, is when a gymnasium is placed in the interior, all the security measures that need to be in place, so that we, you know, because we have public coming in, and the placement of that gym, so that perhaps there is a way to cut it off from the outside. Maybe the gym is accessible from the outside, and the public can come directly into the gym, and there's no access into the school itself at that time. So those are just sort of some of the pieces that I'm thinking of as I'm looking over the plan and the review.
Thank you. Through the chair, if I may, try to catch up on a couple of the comments that have been made. SEAC certainly is on our roster of those that we need to get to, both for this process and for any new school designs, we do do that. We also do look at their input on any sort of specialty space, so it may not even be on a school, it might just be, we're going to look at the life skills area and what that may or may not look like, or some of the accessibility washroom issues. We've done some tours from time to time with SEAC that have worked out to be, I think, more productive, quite frankly, than looking at paper, trying to have people look at drawings and say, you know, does a wheelchair, or will, you know, a certain piece of accessibility equipment fit through that doorway or room, and how easy is it to maneuver? Like, being on-site works much, much better, so we typically try to do that. The election one is interesting because I had a comment from trustee Gray earlier about the location of the gym for, I suspect, other reasons, but just access in and out, those types of things. We've looked at a number of different things, and this, it all starts to get complicated. Also, how do you do all the things you want to try and do? One of the things that our schools have consistently, the occupants of our schools have consistently reported back is the circulation pattern in the school from a supervision and a distribution of the population works very, very well when it's in that, I'll call it circular, but it's actually square, just by nature, around the gym. So having that big void in the building that creates corridors, classrooms on the outside for natural light, gives a certain combination of classrooms on the outside, corridor system that works particularly well for, as I say, supervision and flow. That's been a very consistent feedback that we've got. Now, having said that, that's with the gym in the middle. The gym on the outside of the building has been popular in some boards because the community doesn't get access to the school. We have a very different relationship with our municipalities, particularly parks and recreation, that, quite frankly, they're as comfortable in our schools, we're as comfortable having them in as our own people. When they open the doors, they use the halls, they use the washroom, they use, you know, all those other things that go with the gym, so it's not just the gym. Boards that have an outside access let the group come in, use the gym and go back out again, without having access to a lot of those other things. So there's a, there's a different relationship that at least lets us do one or the other. And I'm not saying that we have to because of that, but that's one of those things. We did, we have put a few gyms on the outside, and it then lets you have natural light into a gym, which is a sort of a rarity in Holton, because we put so many of them in the middle. When you walk into a gym with natural light, the question is, is it the right safety thing to do? Does it let you show, you know, projections of movies and things the way you should? Because the first thing you get asked for is, how do you darken the windows? Like, they're really great when you want them, but they're an issue when you don't. So there's a number of these things that all have to get put into the hopper and boiled through, but appreciate the comments on the election one in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gervence. This may be a little outside of this or not yet, but any thoughts of greening rooftops or anything like that?
I'll start slow. I've had, the rooftop issue has been a very popular one that we've had many, many times. One of our, I think, advantages we have in Holton is we still have decent school sites. So we're still getting upwards of eight, seven to eight acres, as much as the parking is increasing and the buildings are increasing. We haven't reached the point yet, in our opinion, where we don't have green space for kids to play on the ground. There are boards in the province where they've tried to put their play areas on the roof, literally, the actual student play area. And I know that's not necessarily what you're talking about, but it is a variation of the green roof. The green roof one is almost mandated now in Toronto because of the lack of ground level space that they can actually do greening on. From a construction standpoint, they leak, like, there is an issue around the design of them and the maintenance of them, the structure of holding the proper materials and whatnot. Is it an access point that you're going to, so are you greening it for the purpose of greening the roof and insulating it and doing those things, or is it actually a space that people can go to and enjoy the green? We, you know, there's those debates as to what its actual function and purpose are. In our case, we've seen it to be a cost premium that we probably wouldn't let kids take advantage of, and leads to maintenance issues down the road. So to date, we haven't gone down that path. We've certainly investigated a lot of the issues related to it. As you know, we've also been toying with the concept of three-story schools. Do we now need to be going up a couple extra floor levels to try and reduce the footprint and afford more space on the site? Those are things that have all kind of factor into the whole routine. A three-story building would mean a smaller overall roof space at a higher elevation, but it would also afford you more space on the ground for kids to do what we think they need to be doing on the ground, those types of things. What we're actually seeing is with the number of full-day kindergarten and JK specialized rooms and the need to have certain things on the ground floor, our ground floor footprint doesn't change all that much by going to two or three-story, because some things have to be on the ground floor. By the time you've put them on the ground floor, you've got a big enough footprint that you double it up and you've got a decent-sized school. So there's a few factors that render that. So the green roof one is one we're certainly aware of, have investigated. We haven't gone down that path yet, but it's certainly a great conversation to have.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. Thought of a few more. The gymnasium, I'm a firm believer that I really wish we still had stages, but we don't, so we have temporary stages. When you have a temporary stage, you put it up in the gymnasium, you never know if they're going to put it on the long end or the short end. And one of the really hard things, having a bit of a background in theater, is getting on and off the stage, and we need doorways. So we have these big, long rectangular ones with a fantastic middle door, which is, you know, good for bringing in the audience, but we don't have stage left, stage right in such a ways. And it can be through the gym storage, or it can be through something unusual. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, a real door, it can be a door that is a closet most of the time or something. But I know at James T. Beale Hill, there's a fourth corner that doesn't have a door, that doesn't have any lockers on the other side, and every time we look at it, it's like, gee, why isn't there a door there? We could just get off the stage that side. Like, so, you know, if we don't need it for a enclosed corner, like you would have a bomb shelter or something in a basement, if you don't need it that way, no, I mean, if you don't need an interior corner that has absolutely no access to it, if that's not the necessary reason, there's a few more doors needed. Also, I firmly believe that the music room should be as far away from the office as possible. Grade sevens and eights have a tendency to practice outside the music room occasionally when they break into different groups. We used to have three practice rooms, now we only have two, so that usually pushes another couple of kids outside, and it can get loud. So, you know, the farther they are away from normal traffic patterns, the better. And also making sure whoever's underneath the music room has, if it's on the second floor or above it, has appropriate soundproofing, because that also can be a problem. So the music room next to the life skills, maybe might want to look into making sure that if you do that, which is fine, it can be a good thing, you just have to have the right soundproofing both ways, right, for both groups? Because trying to listen to very soft music, if you've got loud activity or kindergarten classrooms, that's also an issue sometimes, the kindergarten kids being too close. And the other one is just closets, basically, closets, closets, and more closets, and equality between the two kindergarten play areas and the amount of storage space.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I may, just want to comment on the stage one. The stage and the gym, sort of, the whole evolution of it has gone through, as you say, a number of different things. We used to have a permanently built stage raised, not uncommon to have the curtain wall between that and the space so it could be used as a classroom. Lots of comments about how that didn't work, not an ideal instructional space. It then became the fold-down stage that came out of the wall. Invariably, no matter where it went, whether it was on the long wall or the sidewall, we'd always hear back from at least one group of teachers or staff or administrator, it was on the wrong wall, it should have been on the other one. Some like to sit in the sort of middle of the long wall versus the end of the setting. So that was when it kind of went to the floating portable stage, if you will. Your comment about access to it, absolutely correct. No matter where it goes, we should have the ability to create the exit and entrance to the backstage area from both sides of the stage. And most recently, oddly enough, we were putting in the lighting systems, a fairly basic stage lighting system for drama purposes, and the principals have said, take it out. We don't use it, we don't need it, we don't want it, we've got better uses for that money, and it really doesn't get used in that particular fashion. So we've now evolved to the point where we don't put in a stage or lighting or anything related to it, and temporary settings go in, and that seems to be what the system is telling us they want. So I hear your comments, but I'm hearing from the system that they have a number of different issues with it at this point in time. So we have a lot of people that we have to listen to and try and come up with the right, this is worse than decorating your house, let me tell you.
Do you decorate your house by committee?
No.
You just let your wife do it? There you go, you're a smart man. Trustee Al Harrison.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief, Madam Chair. I'm just looking at the external piece, the external area, and I was at a session yesterday where Toronto Public Health unveiled a new study that they did in partnership with the David Suzuki Foundation. So they did a major lit review, and the majority of the studies, by a long shot, found a positive correlation between mental health, well-being, higher, and reduction of stress, anxiety, depression with the presence of green space. So I think that it would be great if, I know we're limited by the site, the site size, but there's really compelling reasons to maximize what we do in those green spaces. Some of the other findings were around lower rates of aggression, so I thought that related really well to what, to school sites, happier people, more greens, if there's more green space.
It's amazing they had to do a study to get to that conclusion. One of the things that has occurred over time in the schools, we used to have very small parking lots on purpose. It was the municipalities that caused the increase in the actual amount of on-site parking to try and get, you know, any sort of activity off of the street. That led to a massive increase in the number of cars. It was almost like now we've invited or enabled parents to drive and drop off, and you'll notice some of our school sites have, you know, a drop-off loop on this side, a drop-off loop on that side. The parking lots designed in a loop configuration, so even though it's not a loop, you can actually loop through it. In addition to that, there's still the bus loop. The bus loops, in some cases, had to be three lanes wide, because if the bus was stopped, the cars had to be able to stop, and the cars had to be able to get past the cars that were stopped. Those were all driven by municipal decisions at site plan. What is fascinating right now is I'm seeing most of our municipalities come back to us and say, we've got to get more green space back on the school sites by eliminating the parking. So they're changing the bylaws where it used to be you had to put in a minimum of parking, now they're saying a maximum of a certain amount of parking so that you don't use up that green space, because it relates to a whole bunch of things. It's the water runoff, it's the stormwater management issues, it's the hard surface place, so a really interesting shift in, I think, the dynamic that points to a lot of the things that you're talking about, and rightly so.
Just to add quickly, that one of the other findings, I just skimmed the surface there, but provides added benefit in low-income and vulnerable areas. So I think that kind of underscores the equity piece, and so it's great that municipalities are moving that way, too.
Thank you very much. And I don't see any other speakers on this topic, so I think you've got a few comments and suggestions to take away, and I'm sure when we see the next iteration of it, that we'll be able to supply some more.
Madam Chair, and you will, it will be an ongoing, so we hope to be back many times with this in different formats. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for bringing it, and it's a very good report, and I look forward to seeing the next version. So the next information item is full-day kindergarten update. Superintendent Padra Barrett, report 15129 on page 86 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Padra Barrett, when you're ready.
Thank you. Just kind of an annual report we bring to trustees through the implementation of full-day kindergarten. Now the implementation is done, but we thought we would, at least for the next... Now the implementation is done, but we thought we would, at least for the next little while, keep you posted on some of the updates and the newness that's happening in the program. And we recognize for many of the, this would be the first time you're seeing this report. So I'm just going to, on a few slides, just highlighting some of the aspects of the report, and I'll speak to them and then take any questions. So this year, 7,415 students, 76 schools with full-day kindergarten, which the ministry is really just calling kindergarten now, because we only have one program. I'm just so hung up on using full-day kindergarten that I use them interchangeably. 292 classes, 18 of those are teacher-only sections, and that, the regulations allow us to have certain classes with 15 kids, no more than 15, and a teacher only. So there's 18 of those without an ECE, just a teacher. All other sections are staff with a teacher and ECE. Right now, our average class size is 25.4, which is just under the 26, which is a soft, it's not a hard cap, it's a soft average that we're looking for, that the ministry likes to see. There is no mythical supersized large classes out there. You'll hear a lot of 35, 40 kids, and I think right now the highest class we have is 30 in our system. So we've really tried to attend and act to the numbers where we can. We keep going with expanding our outdoor play spaces. I really like to call them dynamic outdoor learning environments, because that's what we're putting in every school. We're nearing the end of this project this year, so this is one of the last lagging implementation pieces. And I've just got some pictures up here, so you can see, I think the pictures do the projects more justice. I don't know if you can see, the lighting seems to be a little bright, but... Yeah. So this is what we're putting in. Outdoor plays, it's a big part of the program, and it's becoming a bigger part in our, across our system, as our teachers and ECs are using these spaces, we're providing them more and more, and schools are really personalizing them. There isn't a cookie-cutter design out there. We do ensure they have certain aspects, but they're really personalized for each school. So you can see, this would be an example of a before at WH Morton, and then an after, so how the spaces can transform. And it's really adding value to this, and it really does fuel the learning for kids. So the classroom can be inside or outside, the play can be inside or outside. It really is becoming diverse spaces. So there would be Emily Carr, Tom Thompson, you can see that's an outdoor chalkboard, so they can, again, bring elements of literacy or design out around there, and there's sand play and landscape features. It really is open-ended creative play. There isn't pieces that are dedicated to one thing, like a climber that only one child can climb on and that has to be closed during the winter. So it's really coming along nicely, and the report is kind of the last schools and where they are. What's new in 2015-16 is a flyer I passed out, it's nights we're going to put on for the community well before the registration process called Calling All Three-Year-Olds. There'll be five, these are regional nights that will be happening, and it's just an outreach to parents to get them more information earlier on in the process. And I give you the flyer, just so you're aware of them, where they are, and please do attend if you can pop by. They're free-flow, open houses, they involve our community partners. And again, it's just providing connections for our soon-to-be families to come in and learn about the program upfront. It's not designed to replace school-based nights, but to get information out even sooner to them. So that will be happening, that's a new piece. With that, we're also offering families that do come and register early access to school libraries, and once we can enter them in Trillium, we have a record of them, and this will do a couple of things. It offers them access to books really close to home, gets little books into little hands, which is a good thing, and also it helps them affiliate to their school. So if their children are anxious or have any special needs or just curious about school, they can come with their parent, get in the school, visit, and sign up to books. So it's an authentic way to help them affiliate to their soon-to-be school. We are expecting from the ministry a revised program document. It's been a draft document all these years. We are expecting late, late fall, that would be up to December 21st, a new program document for full-day kindergarten. It should be substantially different in the look and feel of it, but the overall tenants, we don't expect to change of, it's still being very much a play-based program. We're also expecting a provincial report card to roll out for kindergarten, which is a departure. Right now, every school board has their own reporting structure for kindergarten, and it will be becoming a provincial report, similar timeframes to the grade one to eight report cards. And just by way of an update, we've added two more schools for before-and-after programs this year. It was Limehouse and Brant Hills, and that means all schools with elementary-school-age kids, except two, have before-and-after school programs, which is, I'm not sure there's a school board in Ontario with a higher rate of before-and-after school programs. It's something Halton Families really, really have picked up on. So there's two schools, Oakwood and Killbride, without the program, and if parent demand ever, ever came, we would offer it. In case of Oakwood, there's lots of community partners offering free to, low-cost to free, no-cost programs in that area around Kerr Street Ministries and things like that. And Killbride, one day will come along. So I can take any questions if you have any.
Well, thank you very much for your report. Are there any comments or questions on the full implementation of all-day, full-day kindergarten? Trustee Gray.
Through you, the Chair, I just wanted to comment that I really like the idea that we're reaching out to our families early, and through this process of inviting them to an open house or a drop-by at these different area schools, I think that'll mean a lot to the parents in our community to have that opportunity, but also to get the little ones into our schools, accessing resources, and getting to feel more comfortable with the whole notion of their first school experience. So kudos to everyone involved and under your leadership, Scott, for making this program and this initiative happen in this school year.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. Yes, through you to Superintendent Padra. I really love the library card idea, that really sounds really cool. James W. Hill has a community library that is the same as the school library, and so the children who go there in the neighborhood hours, you know, start to realize that's the same library that they would go in through the other door. I'm kind of wondering what you're going to do with potentially children who want to access that and can't, because it's only school hours. So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, perhaps if they're having an evening program or something, there maybe we might at some point be able to find a way that, you know, once a month or something, they can find a way, or put an order with their older siblings, I suppose. And it's nice to see the naturalized play spaces, because, well, the terminology would be kindergarten pen, and, you know, it's nice to have a kindergarten garden. So I appreciate all the work that's been done on that, too. Kindergarten being my soft spot right now, so thanks. Thank you. Vice Chair Collard.
Thank you so much for putting this together. I absolutely love it, and, I mean, what more do you need to attract children than a colorful flyer? This is really wonderfully put together, and I just wanted to compliment you on it.
Thank you.
That would be our communications folks who put all that together. So thanks to Marnie and her team. It does look great. It's going out to, it'll be, it's not out yet, but it's going out imminently to all our childcare's, community agencies, where, you know, we're trying to get it out through anywhere we think a three-year-old kid might be hanging out.
Thank you. Trustee Gervence.
Through you, Chair Amos. I love this, this is fantastic. And I have to say that I think the naturalized play area for kindergartens is pretty successful, considering my grade-one son was so sad that he didn't have it last year. He looks into the gate. He wants to play in there. So, yeah, I think that it's a really, the kids must really love it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions tonight? Seeing none? Well, thank you very much for your report. This is really great, great news. Thank you very much, Superintendent Padra Barrett. We'll all want to be in kindergarten again so we can use such great play areas, right? Okay, so we're now up to Administrative Procedure Update. Director Miller, Report 15127 on page 88 of your board package. Director Miller.
Hey, that's a lot easier to say than associate.
Thank you, Chair Amos. There is only one new procedure here, and that's a result of some changes in legislation. It's before you, it's about the distribution of materials, and that, much of it has to be approved at the director's office. The reality is, most of it goes straight to the schools, and principals make those decisions, but they'll consult. If someone wants to distribute to all our schools, then it would come to the director's office. But even at that, we still allow principals the discretion on what they're going to distribute or not distribute. And I would just add that, and it's here at the bottom of the procedure on the second page, the Halton School Board does not endorse any pre-approved materials, just in case people see when we send it to schools that they think that that's approved. We allow the principals lots of leeway there.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this administrative procedure? No? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Board Report Update. Director Miller, Report 15128 on page 91 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. There's not, there's no real updates on this. There is one change, the Boundary Review Report that was supposed to be for October 21st. We're going to change the date on that, we'll get back to you with a new date, just, it'll be fairly soon, it's just we haven't had an opportunity to do it. But other than that, I think we're, we're still pretty well on schedule. There'll be some more modifications, particularly around PBC and things like that, as those come in as well, so. Any, yeah, that's it, unless there's any question.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. Seems like a good segue. One of the reports that we haven't had in the six years that I've been here is a follow-up report on the library at James W. Hill or the library at White Oaks, the ones that are open to the public. Now, James W. Hill's not open to the public at the same time the school's open, but it definitely is a shared space, and we haven't done it since. And so I don't know whether we didn't do it since because it didn't work, or because we built in Other Than Oakville, or whatever. So I was just thinking that maybe a request at some point, somewhere down the line, that we actually just collect the data and issue the report saying, how's it going, and do we want to do these? And then each of us in our own municipalities, for instance, the next northeast number, northeast Oakville number two, my guess is it's going to be a while till they can figure out where to put a library up there, that might be another one. You know, there are a few others where it might be done again, or maybe not. Maybe now, you know, the childcare piece might be more important. All I can say is that it does, it does change how people see the school, how many people are at the school, that kind of thing. So sometimes, you know, that can be a good thing, and we're talking community hubs, and it just requires a design change and having that outside door. So, you know, might want to keep that in mind in those design guidelines, that, you know, if you want option A for the outside door, option B for an extra closet or something, just to keep those things in mind.
I'm going to refer to Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you. To the Chair, I would say, for the most part, we haven't built a school without having had the conversation. So in many cases, it doesn't occur for a variety of different reasons, and it's changed over the years. The earlier struggle was about timing, having to have both organizations be able to commit at the right time to proceed with the design where you could incorporate a joint library was really difficult. There was also, I suspect, a certain amount of unwillingness at certain times, but I think that is gone. I look at Hayden, and you talked about James W. Hill being the last. Hayden actually followed that, it's a secondary setting, far more integrated, much more, I'll say, modern in its design intent and delivery. So they have evolved. The Killbride one is, again, completely integrated. So there's a number of them that I think we have in different models, and I would say, for the most part, we're having those conversations. I do have a counterpart in each of the municipalities that we meet with on a fairly regular basis to review the LTAP and what's coming next and what they might partner with. We're currently talking with Oakville on a number of different sites, may or may not be library, but on a number of different other potential municipal assets. So I think they are occurring, but I think, yeah, your first comment's right, we haven't really brought a report on the topic, and if trustees were interested in such, we could certainly do so, but I don't think we've missed the boat.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
My, it's a superficial comment, I think we can remove David DiWally from the list of, for reporting to us, and replace Director of Education with Stuart Miller. And then perhaps I wonder if some of the ones that previously have Stuart Miller's name beside it should now say Associate Director for, as a placeholder for the future.
I think he's a dual personality right now. He's, because I-
It's a bit of a security blanket for me, so I like his name, though.
Thank you for pointing that out. Is there any other comments or questions on this report tonight? Seeing none? Okay, we're now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Vice Chair Collard.
Yes, SEAC met last night, and we had a very productive evening, managed to get through two more of the standards of the Spec Ed Plan, made some really good progress in that area, and we had some very good discussion. We also had a lot of staff present for that, so it was a very good and interactive meeting, and I think we made a lot of progress.
That's good news. Trustee Harvey Hope. Yes, we, just a heads up that you will be getting an audit committee report from the September 22nd Audit Committee. It will come in October at some point. Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. So I sit on the Centre for Skills and Development Board and was really pleased to be in attendance at the Women in Skilled Trades Celebration. Thank you to Trustee Graves and Trustee Collard for attending as well. It really made me pause to reflect, although we look at the board educating our students from three to 21, it was wonderful to look at post-secondary opportunities. And when I think about seeing so many strong 15 women graduate from this program, I reflect on all the robotics programs and our manufacturing programs, and knowing that the equity of access to our students is encouraging girls to get involved. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. The Program and Accommodation Committee met last week, and we're in the process of developing the Terms of Reference. We had a draft to work with, and I'll be incorporating the feedback that we gathered and share that with trustees for further comments. We also talked about the importance of the consultation process for the Program Viability Committee, and that multifaceted approach needs to be taken into consideration. And we had a presentation from Superintendent Padra Barrett, no, Zahnenfeld, sorry, Zahnenfeld, on the SEAC Committee, and thinking about what the interaction between the program and accommodation- thinking about what the interaction between the Program and Accommodation Committee could be with CAC in terms of looking at special education programs, placements and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others?
If not, see, I have a couple. We had a joint transportation meeting with our co-terminus board, the Halton Catholic District School Board, and there was a lot of good discussion about setting potential parameters for belltime study. But we realized that we need to consult on a few other things before, like the late starts and that, because they're all pieces of the puzzle. So there will be some things that'll be happening before we have our next joint meeting. Also, I just would like to remind everyone that the Parent Involvement Conference is Saturday, October the 17th at White Oaks Secondary School. It's an awesome day. If you haven't been, you should go. You should make sure your communities go, but you do need to register. So go on to the PIC website. And I'm sure they'll be shutting the registration down soon because they usually shut it down at least a week before. So they have numbers. So please go on and register if you want to go. And one more thing is the Halton Learning Foundation Gala is coming up on Thursday, November the 12th. It's their Big Benefit Bash and the headliners this year are Midlife Chaos, which is our own executive officer of Blackwell is one of the members. And it's a great event that helps support the students of Halton. And I encourage everyone to try and be there and everyone out there who's watching to be there. I think those are the only committee reports I have. So the next item is our director's report, your first director's report.
Thank you, Chair. I know that you, we have at least one viewer today because he's emailed me several times. Mostly with sarcastic remarks about me, but that's besides the point. Anyway, I have two good news reports tonight. One is a teacher at WH Morton, Sandra Dubreal, is a recipient of the 2015 OTIP Teaching Award in the category of Beginning Teacher. So that's pretty cool. And from Tecumseh, the grade six, eight Learning Disabilities Class was recognized as honorable mention, or the teacher, sorry, J.C. Jones, the teacher of that class, Learning for a Sustainable Future. Her class project was Plant Wars, Native Versus Invasive Plant Series, Species. And this is a Jack Layton Award for Youth Action and Sustainability. So congratulations to Tecumseh. And that's it.
So that's your full director's report tonight?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, we're now up to communications from the chair and I have a couple items. Earlier today, we passed a motion for the Associate Director. We will, there will, I believe the director is looking for some trustees to potentially be on the committee. So if you are interested, please let me know. We generally pick from geographically and will also take into account whether you've been on a process before. But please email me so that I know, okay? Thank you. And it won't be first come, first served. It'll be a fair process. The other piece is tomorrow is Pink Day at Airclaw Ridge High School in honor of breast cancer. The game starts at 1:00. I believe they're playing Nelson High School. And Airclaw Ridge 11 years ago started Pink Day in honor of cancer before the NFL teams had picked this up. So they were actually the, the first, the foundation of Pink Day and that got sort of spread across North America. So it's quite an exciting event.
Can I just say something about that?
Go ahead.
Actually, the teacher at White Oaks that began that was, she's, she's retired now, is Linda Anstead, who was a co-op teacher at, at Airclaw Ridge and White Oaks prior to that, so.
And she started because a student's parent had died. And it was in honor of that to try. And it's just been something that happened. It's a, it's a doubleheader game. Everybody wears pink and they do a lot of fundraising because they're selling food and all kinds of things. It's really, it's a really cool day. So if you have an opportunity, come on out. Also, I know there's a number of commencements tomorrow night and there's a number of trustees going to bring greetings from the board. So it's quite an exciting evening and to see what students are doing when they come back from school, how, what courses they're involved in, that kind of stuff. And I think that's it for my chair's report. So now we're up to trustee comments and questions. Are there any tonight? There's a couple. Trustee Gray.
Yes, I'd like to just make mention tonight of the special accomplishments over at George Kennedy with regards to the Terry Fox Run. This year, it was the 25th anniversary of the Terry Fox Run being supported by the George Kennedy School. And over the 25 years that they have been participating in this run, the school has raised more than $115,000 towards the Terry Fox Foundation. And this year, they were presented with a commemorative banner to mark that occasion. But in addition to that, I also want to send out a special kudo to a special student at that school, Evelyn Waters, who as a 10-year-old personally raised $820 of the $2,300 raised this year at that school. And that's an amazing accomplishment. And it was dedicated by her to her father, who is currently in a situation where he's fighting a rare cancerous disease. So congratulations to Evelyn for her tremendous contribution on behalf of the Terry Fox Run at her school, George Kennedy Public School.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Hi, I have two comments, an event that happened and an event that's coming. Not a day goes by when I'm connecting the schools that I am, find out about activities run by volunteers and community partners for our, our students. And I, I need to do a shout-out to the Burlington Golf and Country Club. I had the happy chance of attending a golf tournament for our, our high schools recently. In fact, it was with our co-terminus board as well. Five of the eight schools were from the Halton District School Board. But what, what impressed me was what a fine event this community partner puts on. No charge to our students, including dinner, the golf, the volunteers. And so I was really taken aback that, that they do that. So I'm glad we have our recognition policy that we're working on because, man, that's, they, they deserve a shout-out. The second thing is at Aldershot High School, the Spoons are having a concert. And I know you've seen the, the posters everywhere. I hope that you join me. Tickets are online, $35. You can purchase them through the Halton Learning Foundation. The event is Saturday, October the 24th, 7:00 PM. The band opener is, oh. No, how come I'm beautiful nothing? Thank you. Oh, my gosh. And I hope you can join us. The funds raised from this event are actually going to refurbish the auditorium and it is in the auditorium. And for those of you who may not know, but the Spoons actually attended Aldershot High School. So it's a real homecoming of sorts. And I hope you can join me.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yes, I'm going to take a personal note here and thank all of you at the board for your support for the last week, for all your condolences and your support. So I really do appreciate it. And Halton District School Board is a special place and you guys approved that to me this week. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies to Superintendent Zoninfeldt for blanking on his name earlier. Okay, September 23rd. September 23rd, I was invited to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Pilgrim Wood Outdoor Classroom and Garden. So it's a wonderful outdoor setting and I thank staff and council for the invitation. And on September 29th, I held my first super council meeting of the new school year. We had reps from all the schools despite the upcoming potential changes in council composition with the new school year starting. Once again, we had Suzanne Burwell presenting on active transportation to get that, to continue that conversation and resource sharing in Ward Four. And thanks to Abbey Park High School for hosting. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Just two quick good news notes. Firstly, congratulations to Equale Pine Grove for their French Pen Pals program that they've set up. So there's a class of grade fours, I believe, that's corresponding with a grade four class in, in France. So, and just really bringing the language piece to life, which is pretty amazing. And, and secondly, I know, I think I've talked to you before about Lake Lock and the community issue that was raised around littering. And congratulations to the Eco Club for doing many cleanups at this point in time. In fact, they invited me last week and we kind of expanded and, and they had maps and the students went out and cleaned up the neighborhood. And it was really great when cars stopped and rolled down their windows and shouted out thanks to the kids. It was pretty, pretty cool to be a part of that. So, so they're doing a really great job. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions tonight? Trustees' comments or questions? Seeing none? Okay. I guess I just want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. And I know, and I hope everybody has fun with family and friends. And I'd like to have a motion to rise into private. Try, trustee Harvey Hope and trustee Graves. All those in favor?
Thank you. We're now in private session and when the public has cleared the room, we can commence.